Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the second hearing of the Public Accountability and Work Committee's inquiry into the New South Wales Government's use and management of consulting services. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today, and I pay my respects to elders past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people joining us today or who are watching online. At today's hearing, the committee will examine the use of consulting services primarily in the health sector. We were here from representatives of three local health districts, from PWC and from Professor Mary Foley, who is the former Secretary of New South Wales Health. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in the room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the Secretariat. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving their evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at this hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others, under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to take a question on notice, sorry, unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses from the South Eastern Sydney Local Health District. Could you please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation? Start to my left.
Jonathan Doi, board member. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
Michael Still, board chair. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Toby Wilson, chief executive. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Would you like to begin by making a short opening statement?
No.
No?
No.
Even better. It's very good, thank you. I will start off, if I may, one of the aspects of the use of consultants that we are looking into, particularly in relation to New South Wales Health, is the issue of conflicts of interest, particularly when it comes to local health district boards. Could you explain to the committee how those conflicts of interest are recorded? It's not always very clear from the minutes. What is the ultimate source of those potential conflicts of interest?
I should answer that, Chair. At each meeting, we commence after the acknowledgement of country with a request of all members around the table to acknowledge to the table any conflicts that may have arisen during the course of the previous month. There's a register. It's reasonably extensive. We ask for not just conflicts but all organisations that members might be a director of, partner of, anything that might be seen as a possible conflict at some stage.
Is there an initial recording of that? So when a board member first gets appointed, do they put that into the register of conflicts of interest or do you wait until the first board meeting that they're at and then they declare it?
I'd be safest to say that we wait till the first meeting, but that's not always the case because on a couple of occasions, when I've met with new board members before their first meeting, I've talked them through board process, including that we acknowledge any potential conflicts of interest and any actual conflicts of interest. And on those occasions, I would tell the board secretary any information I might have received, but really wait for the first meeting.
I will, perhaps if I could just table these documents. This is a selection of minutes from the South Eastern Sydney Local Health District Board dating from, what I'm giving you is the February 2013 minutes, March 2014, April 2014, June, July, August 2014, and then April and May 2015, in case it's relevant as we're going through this. And I have copies for the other committee members in that pile. Sorry, if you could just, so that's a clip for each pile. All right. So while that is getting sorted out, you'll see that in February 2013, Kristin Stubbs attended her first meeting of the Local Health District Board, and it was noted at that time that she was awaiting sign-off from PWC. What would have been the nature of that sign-off that she would have required at that point?
I'd be speculating, Chair, I don't know. I wasn't Chair at the time.
Are you aware whether the payments for her role as a board member were tied back to PWC?
I have no idea.
Is that something, Mr. Doi, that you could assist with? Is there a, would that be the ordinary case for a board member from PWC?
No, I'm not aware of what the policy might be.
Chair, can I just raise a point of order? Can we have the documents in front of us before we continue questioning the witnesses?
Yeah. I think they can share the, at least one to the opposition, one for government. What is, just before we go further, Mr. Doi, you were a partner at PWC, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I noticed in the minutes that there is a reference to sort of ongoing payments being made to you as a retired partner. Can you explain what that interest is?
Yes, so I retired as a partner from PWC in 2012. And after that point, there is effectively a partner pension plan for retired partners that's varied over the years. There's a particular scheme that I'm in.
And is that, is that reliant then on the successes of the firm in any way? Does it scale up if there is, do you get more payment if the firm is more successful, for instance?
No.
So it's just a set amount?
Yes.
Can I just ask you, sorry, is it 2A that you're looking at at the moment?
So that was 2A? So if we go to March 2014, so that's...
2B.
Yep, 2B. The minutes record that Ms. Stubbs has stepped down from the Chair of the Finance and Performance Committee, this is a year after she had been appointed to chair that committee, due to a temporary conflict of interest. But there's no disclosure of the details around that at that time. And then in April 2014, which is the next tab in the bundle, 2C, it's recorded that Ms. Stubbs is absent from the board meeting because PWC is responding to a request for quote, with the minutes saying that the board recently sent out. Mr. Still, are you aware of the nature of that request for quote and the work that was done by PWC at that time?
The district was in some financial difficulty. Management wished to bring in a consultant to help, so the board was made aware of that. My best recollection is that included in the people to be spoken to was PWC and that when that was acknowledged at the board, Ms. Stubbs said, "Well, I can't be at the board if PWC is in discussion."
In the year leading...
Sorry, Chair, if I may, just for clarity, the request for quote was sent out by Cessla, not by the board. So the entity sent out, the chief executive has the delegation around that at that time.
So the chief executive sent it out?
So the management would have put the request for quote out.
In the year preceding this disclosure from Ms. Stubbs, she was sitting as the Chair of the Finance Performance Committee. And the minutes record disclosures around that difficult financial situation that the district was facing. And Ms. Stubbs was deeply involved in the discussions as the Chair of the Finance Performance Committee around those troubles. Would that decision to appoint consultants to help with that situation have been made at the level of the Finance and Performance Committee?
No, it would not have. It's a management decision. I don't know what happened at that particular meeting, whether or not anything was suggested. I know that at some stage around that time, I suggested to management that perhaps you need some help here. But it would not have come as an instruction from Finance and Performance.
The Chief Financial Officer sits on that Finance Performance Committee though as well, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, so they were sitting there with Ms. Stubbs as a current PWC partner, and they were discussing work in relation to, basically making that decision that they require consultants to help. Is that correct?
I don't know whether the Finance and Performance Committee did choose to say to the CFO that they should go out, or the management should go out for consulting help. I don't know.
Those Finance Performance Committee meeting minutes are not publicly available. I requested them through a GIPA process, but I've been told so far that it's, I'm not able to see those documents. Is that something that the board, well, that you could provide to this committee?
I'm not sure what the ministry's rules, if you like, are around all of this. We don't, at least as Chair, I didn't know that you'd made the request.
So in June 2014, in the next set of minutes, Ms. Stubbs again does not attend the meeting because of a potential conflict of interest, because at that point, PWC has been successful in being commissioned for that work. Can you tell me how many other firms were approached?
Two.
Two other firms?
Yes.
Are you able to tell us who they are?
McKinsey's and KPMG.
McKinsey and KPMG, thank you, that's very useful.
Oh, sorry, was that for that?
Yes.
Yes, it was, yes. There was several pieces of work done.
In those same minutes, it was stated that PWC's commission would be for approximately four months, but the work goes on for longer than that, as is demonstrated in the minutes after that. What was the nature of the work they're involved in and how long did it go for?
The nature of the work was to identify systemic problems in the operations and the finances of the district in order to return it to a net neutral bottom line.
Okay, so it was consulting work?
Ah, yes.
From PWC Consulting, not from their assurance or other?
No, no consulting.
No? Okay, very good. My understanding from reading the minutes is that a program office was established. Was that program office established purely in relation to that PWC work? What was the nature of PWC's engagement with that?
Now, the chief executive was relatively new at the time, and he told me that it had been his practice in troubled operations to establish a program office where people would be allocated to that office and would concentrate their day on looking at difficulties and sorting out how to fix them.
In July 2014, so in those next minutes, records that Ms. Stubbs will not attend the board or FPC meetings, quote, "for the duration of the work." Would you have known at that point what that duration of the work would have been? Would we have been looking at, I mean, at that point, the board had been told that this PWC work would go for at the least four months, but then they were looking at, you know, a one to two-year horizon of initiatives. When Ms. Stubbs advised that she was sort of, I guess apologising for the next, what did she say? She's like, sorry, she would not attend, so she's not stepping down, she's just not attending the board meetings for the duration of the work. How long was it anticipated that she would not be attending for?
My best recollection is that that was for the three or four months that was anticipated originally. But as we got into it and found that the issues would probably take quite a lot longer to resolve, I can't assure you of the date, but it was clear that her position on the board might be untenable from a governance point of view, and so she resigned.
So let's just get to that because in, so then in the next month, in August, she's recorded as being on leave of absence rather than an apology at that point. The same minutes record detail of the initiatives coming out of PWC work that could last for three years. But at that stage, why was Ms. Stubbs not asked to resign? She just takes leave of absence at that point. Why was that decision made?
My memory serves me, it was during the course of the month following that meeting that she came to me and said that her position shouldn't hold, that she should resign.
Perhaps you should look at the minutes because in August 2014, she's recorded as being on leave of absence, but by the next minutes that I've given to you there, the February 2015 ones, she's recorded in the minutes as attending as a board member, with no explanation given as to why the leave of absence had ended.
There was a period, Mr. Wilson, if you'll help me here, there was a flow of what we might call smaller contracts. Ultimately, it was decided that this was going to take a long time, and I can't tell you exactly what month that was. But I think what was happening was that she would not come to board while ever there was work going on or the prospect of work going to PWC being discussed. And then, when it was clear that there was going to be a much longer period of work, she resigned.
When Ms. Stubbs was recorded as being an apology to those board meetings, would she have still been sent the board minutes and the board, you know, the board pack for that meeting with all of the information in it?
Yes. Look, as an apology, I think that's unfortunate terminology, and I should have corrected it at the time. She was not an apology, she had stood aside.
She...
In fact, and no, I expect that she wasn't given any of the minutes, nor the board packs.
She's recorded as being an apology from March to August 2014. She's then recorded as being on leave of absence from August 2014 to February 2015, so it's almost a year. She's then back with no explanation in February and doesn't resign until May 2015. That's over a year of attending, of not attending, attending or being, you know, for whatever reason, not being a participant on the board before she resigns due to this conflict of interest. Would she have been getting payments for that board participation during that time? It seems like extraordinary length of time for someone to be sitting on a board and not participating in it.
It rolled on unexpectedly. As more and more information was unearthed, these consultancies did go on. We didn't expect that to happen.
And would that be usual for, is this just a, you know, poor recording in the minutes? Is it usual for someone to come back with, from a leave of absence from a conflict of interest and there's no new disclosures in the conflict of interest section in the minutes? She's just back? Is that, would that be a sort of normal procedure?
It's an error. It's an error. I would say, you know, the minute should have recorded that the particular piece of work that PWC was doing had ended possibly and that she had returned. That's probably what should have happened.
Okay, so in May 2015, the minutes record Ms. Stubbs as saying that she would, quote, "like to take an active role in the PWC work," end quote.
Yep.
And would need to step aside as a board member. So that's that moment. So clearly the work is still ongoing at that point and has been ongoing.
My memory is that that was preparatory to a larger contract, that there was a new initiative, a new appointment in process, which is, for memory, when we realised that this was going to be quite a long job.
Okay, so at this point, PWC is doing a lot of work for the district. In April 2015, so I'm just hopping back one month, Mary Foley, the Secretary of the Ministry of Health, attends that board meeting.
Yes.
And there's a discussion there regarding the chief executive working with PWC to develop a business case for an integrated care strategy. Ms. Stubbs is recorded as being at that meeting, but again, no conflict of interest is noted at that point. Dr. Foley is then recorded in the minutes as offering Ministry of Health support for implementing that integrated care agenda that the chief executive is working with PWC on. What exactly was being agreed at that meeting and why were no conflicts of interest noted in the minutes?
Again, all of these appointments are a matter for management, not for the board. We do not make a decision to allow or disallow the appointment or to choose which consultant is appointed. This is management.
It's your responsibility though, is it not, to ensure proper governance?
Yes, it is, yes.
So we had a clear case there where we had not just Kristin Stubbs, but, you know, if we look at it, we've also got Mary Foley, who herself was a PWC partner prior to being the New South Wales Health Secretary, at a meeting discussing the appointment of PWC to assist on an initiative with the board members and everyone else there present. Does that seem to pass the sniff test to you?
Mary Foley came as a guest of the board. The secretary has a standing invitation, they very rarely come, but Mary Foley did come one evening. There was a general discussion, for memory, about what was going on. We talked about the integrated care programme, which was front and centre at that time. There was, for memory, no discussion about PWC. It was, I think, acknowledged that PWC were doing the work to help management, but there was, for memory, no discussion of potential conflicts. I think the conflicts would have been assumed to have been managed by management at the time and board, or it might not have been recorded, would have been across the process for appointing the consultants.
So the month after that meeting occurred is when Ms. Stubbs finally tells the board that she'll be resigning and the board agrees, it's reported there that the board agrees in those minutes, that she will step down from May 2015. But she continues to be listed as a board member in the minutes until August 2015, so another three months. Can you explain that?
No, I can't.
She's then listed from August 2015 until the end of November 2016, so another year and a half, or a year and a bit, where she's listed as being an adviser on the board minutes.
Yes, I saw that. She had offered to do some coaching for the CFO. We were needing to modernise the structure of the finance, the structure, modernise the way we went about the finance function totally, as between the centre and the hospitals and within the centre itself. She had offered to give some coaching to the CFO.
So you had a partner of PWC sitting with access to the board and to the CFO for, what, for free?
Ah, yes, there were no payment made.
Very generous of Ms. Stubbs, at the same time as she was working for PWC and the district was paying considerable amounts of money to PWC. Do you not see that as a blatant conflict of interest?
Look, I don't. She would not have been privy to any of the financials. This was a discussion, according to the CFO and Ms. Stubbs, about structure, how the operation of the finance function should work.
Would it be fair to say that Ms. Stubbs, after officially resigning from the board, was then effectively in a very similar position to what she'd been in in those months prior, where she had access still and influence over the board, but without the responsibility and the, you know, the pesky conflict of interest issue that comes from being an actual board director?
No, I wouldn't say that.
Mr. Still, you are reported in The Australian as having said that, quote, "Times have changed in terms of conflict of interest, but in those days, the board needed help from whatever competent professional they could get," end quote. What did you mean by that? What has changed in terms of conflicts of interest since 2013?
I read that. Unfortunately, it's somewhat out of context. The journalist asked me why anybody from one of these consulting firms would ever be allowed on any of the boards. And what she quotes there saying is probably reasonably right. The system was, my understanding, well over budget, our district itself was well over budget, it needed a lot of help, and the Health Minister at the time, who was the one that made appointments to boards, was trying to get the best help available to these districts. Obviously, the potential of a conflict would need to have been acknowledged, and it was.
If you were to put yourself in the position of a PWC partner or the PWC, PWC as an organisation, and perhaps, Mr. Doi, you can assist with this as well, it seems like the perfect business model to be, first of all, redesigning a health structure, which I know PWC had quite a hand in, to devolve it into this board structure, to then put consultants onto boards who then are critical in terms of giving work to other consultants while on those boards, building that relationship and then having, you know, a steady flow of income once they sort of go back to their practices. Do you think that when you say "times have changed," do you mean really that people have woken up to that situation and that that infestation of consultants in our local health boards was perhaps not a good idea?
Working backwards, no, I think it was a very good idea. I think these people were invaluable, and in my view, Kristin Stubbs was invaluable to the South East Sydney Board. I couldn't comment on others, but other chairs have told me about the value that some of these consultants have brought.
Did you ever receive a complaint or any other kind of inquiry in relation to this issue of Ms. Stubbs sitting on the board at the same time as PWC being granted work?
Not that I recall.
Are you aware of any ICAC inquiries or any other issues in relation to Ms. Stubbs' appointment on the...
No, no, definitely not. No, no, ICAC never informed me of any inquiry.
Do you think that this situation of a PWC, an active PWC member who had been a consultant for, you know, in the sort of health area of PWC, who had then moved on to being within the assurance function, so that's sort of, you know, what we would see as being perhaps the higher level of integrity required from someone in order, sitting on a health board and giving advice and understanding the sort of ins and outs of everything to do with your district, and then going back to, you know, have a, you know, a great career at PWC, do you think that the average person in the street would find that to be at least questionable?
I think the average person might not understand the complexities... I think the average person might not understand the complexities, particularly of the health system and the needs of the system. I think if those complexities were well understood, the average person would, on learning of the governance that went around it, should be satisfied. I don't think there's a point, really, to saying that they give of their time to these boards only to enhance their own income back at the firm. I think that's quite a stretch.
So, your proposition then is that these partners would sit on a government board to give their consulting advice. I mean, we're talking, she was, Kristin Stubbs was part of a number of committees. So, to be spending that many hours, you know, each board meeting is held in the middle of a working day for two, three hours. These people are very busy people. Would that be consistent with a, you know, a profit-making business model to have these benevolent partners sitting on all of these boards?
I'm sure that if you asked a great number of the partners in these firms, would they give of their time in the same way, they'd say no. But that's supposition. The minister at the time found a number of these people who were prepared to give of their time. The boards, certainly our board, was very grateful.
Are you aware that there's at least six hundred and sixty-six P W C employees and partners sitting on boards across Australia while also being employed at P W C?
No.
So it doesn't seem like it's an exception for just the benevolent few, does it, Mr Still?
Well, it's six hundred. I don't know what the total number of P W C partners might be, to tell you the truth. But it does sound like a number.
Sorry, I will just pause because I'm, I was waiting to be interrupted. Are you, did you?
I'm happy to just do one quick interruption, if you don't mind. In terms of that theory, when it comes to people sitting on boards, I look at the list of members of the boards, and I won't name them because I don't deserve to be named a parliamentary inquiry, but I do note somebody who is a doctor there, and I know that they run a general practice within the region. Would you have any suggestion that they were getting any benefit in sitting on the board in terms of their own doctor's practice?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Still, on the fifteenth of June, we heard from some representatives from New South Wales Health about their spend on consultants. And we heard also on that day that local health districts globally had spent more than a hundred and twenty million dollars on consultants since two thousand and eleven. Can you tell us how much the southeastern local health districts spent on consultants since two thousand and eleven?
Dr Kane, you might benefit from bringing the microphone a little bit closer.
If you'll excuse me, Dr Kane, I'll just ask the Chief Executive to... So, I can provide, from financial year fifteen, I can't go back to eleven, I don't have that number at hand. But from fifteen, the total spend, in fact, I don't have that summed up. If you can just give me a second, I will give you an answer to that. It would be in the region of about nineteen million dollars since financial year fifteen.
Nineteen million in that time. And?
We have identified there is some inaccuracies with some of those numbers, though, which I can address if you would like me to.
Yes, and if you want to provide anything following this, that would be useful. And in fact, if you could provide the breakdown from two thousand and eleven to the most current figures you have, that would be helpful.
Yep.
And how many, if I could ask in this way, how many consultants or consulting contracts have you engaged in the last financial year?
In the financial year two, in financial year twenty-two.
Yep.
We have engaged, we've spent, we've spent three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. We have a small engagement with P W C of just over twenty thousand dollars and an engagement with E Y of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And there's a range of smaller engagements that make up the rest of that number.
Okay, and could you explain briefly what they're for?
Yeah, so the P W C engagement was around some work we were doing around our risk management and getting an external eye to help us with how we were reforming our risk process. And the E Y engagement was around the development of our virtual health strategy. So they were bringing some international expertise to the district to support with that.
And the other contracts that you refer to, they were not with the big four, and were they all smaller in scale?
They're all significantly smaller in scale. One of the challenges when we've gone back to our financial recording is I suspect a number of these are actually contractors rather than consultants. There's a couple in there that I recognise as consultancies, but I think there's some inaccuracies in what we've been able to pull together in our financial records.
Could I ask about that? What kind of guidance are you given from, say, New South Wales Health or procurement in particular about the definitions and where you place contractors and consultants in your accounting?
Yeah, so there's quite a clear guidance paper that circulated through New South Wales Health that actually does come from the procurement board, which provides that definition of the difference between consultancies and contractors, and provides some working examples for us to work through. As I said, I think there's some opportunities for us to improve.
I was going to say, yeah, there still seems to be some ambiguity there from what you.
Yeah, I think this exercise has highlighted that there's some opportunities for us to be more diligent around that. I don't see too many concerns, from what I can see in our records, around our ability to record contractors as contractors. I suspect there's some spend that we're recording as consultancies, which isn't consultancy as per that definition.
And while we're talking about New South Wales Health, what kind of reporting back do you give with regards to your use of consultants, that kind of governance requirements in terms of reporting your use?
So there's certainly an oversight over our procurement processes centrally. So depending on certain thresholds, we'll run that through Health Share and they would have an oversight over that process. Beyond that, it would depend on the specifics of what we're talking about.
Okay.
So just on that, in terms of that reporting mechanism, that's obviously a, I guess, somewhat of a passive approach. Was there any interaction between the procurement oversight board and in terms of feedback on that reporting? Or is it just, here's the paperwork, tick, 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 all good?
In what regard, sorry?
Well, my colleague just asked you a question about the reporting process, and you just said that there's an extensive reporting process higher up the chain. Do you ever get any feedback from those bodies as to the compliance, the conflicts, the use of money, all that sort of thing? Or is it just kind of a reporting process which is, happens without any sort of interactional feedback?
We would certainly get feedback around compliance and the process. Regarding the use of money, that would be a management decision around that. So we wouldn't expect that that group would be providing oversight on that. That would be more taken up through the broader performance framework that exists around how we're tracking financially overall.
So there was, there's never any questioning as to the efficacy of the use of consultants vis-à-vis internal resources in terms of, is it an active dialogue? Or is it, is it, you just give an autonomy to do it?
Well, there's an awful lot of questioning internally around how we do that, as I've demonstrated with our spend in the last financial year, where we've spent three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars out of an annual expenditure budget of over two billion. There's not, it's not a big number that we're actually spending on this. There's an awful lot of diligence. I feel very accountable to my workforce, that if I'm choosing to spend money on this, then I need to be able to justify that in front of our frontline staff. So I don't believe that there's not an accountability that sits there and we're just making those choices.
So, sorry, that, those proportions you just outlined, could you just state them again?
Three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of consultant expenditure in our general ledger in financial year twenty-two out of an overall operating expenditure budget of two billion dollars.
But that annual budget would include all manner of things, when the capital works, recurrent expenditure, what?
No, no, that's our operating expenditure.
So does that, is that just the wage, like wage bill?
Well, broad expenditure. Everything, everything you need to run our health service, our local health district.
Yeah, but if we're comparing apples to apples here, wouldn't it be more logical to compare what the potential alternative resource would be, which would be presumably internal labour resource for these expertise? Let's assume that we had the resource, then presumably that would be a smaller budget, wouldn't it, than the two billion you're talking about?
I don't believe so. I mean, I think we only engage consultants when there's a defined need for that, so I.
No, no, I'm just trying to get a proportion of the relative resource expenditure vis-à-vis, say, the wage bill. Do we know what the wage bill would be?
Well, the wage bill, so generally somewhere between sixty-five and seventy percent of our expenditure is wages, so.
Okay, so one point two billion?
One point four billion, one point five billion would be our wage bill.
So the three sixty, so the point would be that the three sixty is such a minuscule proportion that, based on those headline figures alone, it's not a considerable, and given the scrutiny you're saying that occurs, it's more than justified.
I'm suggesting that we don't enter into this lightly, that we make those decisions with a whole great focus on what we're actually trying to achieve. And the only time we would engage in a consultancy is because we need the expert skills that they potentially could be, because we don't have those skills internally within our organisation or because we are looking for alternate advice that would be able to supplement what we know internally.
Could I just interrogate that just a little bit further? Is that okay?
I'll go after you. Go with.
I just know we're almost out of time, that's all. But I just wanted to, in relation to that three hundred and sixty-odd thousand dollars spent on consultants for the twenty-two F Y, do you know what advice was provided and what, I guess, what skill set was required to be brought in from an external consultancy? And in that instance, how much would it cost to employ those skill sets into the health district? That's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is, what would those skill sets do if they were employed by the health district at times when that part of the work is finished? I.e., obviously, there's a discussion around whether we have that work done internally or whether it's done by consultants. I guess there's two philosophical trains of thought here, is that it's a specialised piece of work that requires resource that isn't employed by the health district. How much would it cost to have that person employed? What would they do if they weren't doing that work? And then what's the, I guess, the skill sets that were required that you didn't have and, you know, hence the consultants? Are you able to expand on that?
So for the two that I have called out specifically, so for the work that we were doing around risk, again, this is, this comes back to what is, what could we realistically expect to be able to employ within a health service, acknowledging the framework that we, the work that we do? So we know that risk professionals in a competitive market generally attract salaries that are far and exceed what we could offer internally. So we use the consultancy to provide targeted level support for those people that work in that risk space within our organisation. So I don't believe that in that example, there is an alternative where you could actually employ somebody. We would not be competitive in the marketplace and be able to attract things, people to do that. And similarly, the E Y piece in the virtual health space, we went to market multiple times trying to bring somebody into our organisation, and we're just not competitive with what we would pay compared to other organisations. And as a result, we need to use other ways of bringing that knowledge into the organisation.
So if I was to summarise the response, in effect, it's cheaper in those instances to have external organisations do the work because to employ the people in, one, you're not competitive, two, it results in a cheaper cost to the taxpayer to have it done, a small amount of work over a limited period of time than having that person on the books for the year, for example, that you would employ them normally.
Yeah, I think the other thing to mention is that we are very clear with how we structure this, so that there is a transfer of knowledge through that process back into the organisation. So we don't do consultancies and then let them walk out the door. In the case of the virtual health space, we've now got quite a clear plan, a business case of how we're taking that forward, and we're making significant moves in that direction, as is much of health in that space.
Thank you.
Mr Wilson, could I take you back to the figures? So, last financial year, three hundred and sixty-odd thousand. Correct me if I'm wrong, that would seem to be less if you averaged out
Yep.
the amount from two thousand and fifteen that you mentioned. Are you able to give a bit of an explanation, I guess, of when there might have been peaks in the consultant spend and the nature of it? Is it, was that, were those peaks characterised by large contracts or proliferation of more contracts?
So there certainly was an increased volume of consultancy spend towards the start of the period that we were talking about, and we dove into some of the work around P W C. There is a peak that's called out in our data in F Y twenty-one, where I think this committee mentioned that there was, that they had identified a five million dollar spend. We've gone back to that data. We've actually found, again, an inaccuracy in how there was an accounting treatment applied in that space. There's a three and a half billion dollar accrual in that line, which isn't related to consultancy, which inflates that number. So that number was about a one and a half million in that time. And again, that was particularly focused around work that was undertaken, sorry, just excuse me, work that was undertaken predominantly around the review of our medical imaging services. A group called Paxton Partners came in and reviewed those for us, and then we made changes to those services. And that's what that accrual was for, was about increasing access over the weekends, increasing the number of staff that we're employing. They were able to come in and help us with working through that model. It was a particularly complicated model within our district, and we needed some external help, and they brought that expertise for us.
So that nineteen million, was that, did that account for that accrual?
That includes that accrual. I'm just giving you the straight numbers that exist in our reports.
Thank you.
Can I ask how much in total you have spent? And I ask this about P W C because you are, your board is interesting in that it's always had somebody who's been connected with P W C sitting on it. How much have you spent on P W C work, whether it's from the district, whether it is consulting, contracting, outsourcing, whatever the case? How much has been the total spend since two thousand and eleven?
Mr Wilson, can I help with the total?
Can I take that question on notice?
If you could, and if you could let me know what proportion that looks like compared to other consultants and other consulting firms along the same lines, that would be great.
Just one following on from that, and it's to whoever considers it's appropriate to answer. Is, do you have a formal policy on employing consultants? Is there a written policy document that the organisation, or particularly the board, has? Under what circumstances you will employ consultants, something in writing?
I don't, I don't believe we would have documentation that would support the process around how you would do it, but I believe that's not what you're asking for.
No, well, if you don't have that, then you have documentation about the process?
Yes.
Would you be able to provide that to the committee?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's consistent with New South Wales Health.
I understand that. And can I ask then, does that document include a process for confirming and checking the qualifications and training of those who come in as consultants?
I would need to take that on notice.
Okay.
We do get the CVs of anybody proposed to be on the team from the consultants as part of their pitch.
But you would, so you would feel comfortable then that in relation to all of those people who come in as consultants, that they would have qualifications and expertise to be able to undertake the work that you're asking them and paying them to do?
Yes. We would certainly, part of that selection process is around the expertise that they bring and the ability, they need to be transparent with us through that process to define who is going to be involved in the piece of work, what skill set, as Michael says, what skill set they have around undertaking that. And we absolutely go back and negotiate that through that process.
And who does that assessment?
There's an evaluation panel that is convened around every one of these that undertakes that work.
And who is on that evaluation panel? What sort of positions would be?
There would be senior people within the management structure. So generally, it would have at least one executive, normally the executive that is sponsoring that piece of work. one executive, normally the executive that is sponsoring that piece of work, um, representative from finance, representative from procurement, um, some other subject matter experts as appropriate.
And just to clarify, not a member of the board, is that correct?
Definitely not a member of the board, yeah. The chief executive has the delegation.
I'll come back to my.
Chair, could I just ask, just on your earlier line of, just on the chair's earlier line of question, Mr Still, where, um, chair outlined what appeared to be quite an extensive, um, conflict of interest, at least in perception. The conflict of interest, um, hierarchy that I'm familiar with usually includes also a perception of conflict. Um, can you outline to us whether or not that, that policy actually exists in terms of, of a perception as well? I mean, the point being that a, a member of the general public whose taxpayers' dollars are being spent um, on what looks like a very, very close relationship where PWC is in fact embedded in the department is what it looks like, and solic- potentially perce- perceived, potentially soliciting work, um, is that something that was, that would, would satisfy your conflict of interest policy?
Um, recall here that the, the, the process and the decisions for these consultancies are made by management, not by the board. Um, if the board was to run these processes and choose consultants, then it may be that a much stricter process around potential conflicts of interest or perceived con- potential conflicts, uh, would have to be undertaken.
Are you saying that management doesn't report to the board on these things, that the board doesn't have the ability to, to intervene when management makes a decision? Is the management just left to their own devices?
Uh, that would be putting it far too strongly. Management is, um, reporting to the board on its process. We make sure that the governance of the procurement, uh, is handled appropriately. As Mr Wilson said, there's a process that comes via the ministry for all of this.
Hmm.
But if you're asking, um, if they come for acknowledgement that McKinsey's are going to be appointed, does, can the board say no? No, the board doesn't.
But the, but the buck stops with you, doesn't it, when it comes to governance? If you were to perceive a conflict of interest or to think that there was some, um, something going on where, where one firm was perhaps being, um, preferred to another, or for instance, if a, if perhaps one of your board members who was sitting on committees was perhaps going to influence a decision to make, um, you know, to, to do something that's going to require a consultant, surely the buck stops with you in terms of.
Yes, but you'll, you'll see from the, from the papers that there is a very rigorous process around choosing the consultant, and it does not include any board member.
On, on every, on any objective basis, I would have thought that that, that particular sequence of events which the chair outlined previously would have at least been a serious breach of a perception of conflict of interest. Was that ever reported to the ministry or the department as a, 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 a breach of that perception and therefore?
Sorry, what's a breach of perception of pub?
Well, there's a thing called a perception of conflict of interest, not just a material conflict of interest.
And what's a breach of?
Uh, uh, the, what I'm suggesting is, is that if that's part of the department's policy and that was breached, then that should have been reported to someone.
The board, the board doesn't report to the ministry.
So the board, the board has no communication with the, with the people who appoint, uh, people to the board.
So the minister appoints the board.
No, I understand that, but there's no, if you're in charge of governance,
Yes.
then there's no communication between your administration of that governance and the people who are appointing to say that this is perhaps not a good idea?
I have to just get some clarity around this, I'm afraid. The people who are appointing, are you thinking of the ministry or the minister?
Well, well, whoever appoints the people to the board surely has to be informed that there's a, there's a, there's a, a potential breach of conflict of interest. And other, otherwise, what's the point of having the policy?
Well, because it's up to the board to administer the policy. The, I don't think there's any need to tell the minister when there might be a, uh, a perception of, um, a conflict. I don't think there's any need for that.
So are you saying you never spoke with the, the minister about any, uh, potential for the conflict of interest to, to be actualised in the case of Miss Stubbs? There was never a discussion?
Not with the minister, no.
In the, um, in the minutes in June two thousand and fourteen, it states that the board chair, which I understand was you at that time, was it not, Mr Still?
Let's check.
The board chair will discuss the governance of Miss Stubbs continuing to attend board meetings, or the part of board meetings which deal with the PWC appointment, with the Ministry of the Health, Ministry of Health and the board. So clearly you did think that it was.
I must have done. Can you just give me the date again there?
That's in the June two thousand and fourteen minutes. So it was clearly significant enough at that time, and quite a, and I think this is, this is what this comes back to. We had this discussion where we went through the minutes, Mr Still, and it was very clear that this had been an ongoing concern for the board around the conflicts of interest. When I've asked you about Miss Stubbs' continued attendance at meetings and the apology rather than stepping down, et cetera, you've told me that these are errors in the minutes. Are you really expecting us to believe that there are so many errors in these minutes that you have signed off on and the board has signed off on?
Well, I don't think there are so many. Correct, so it doesn't look like they're that great.
Sorry, Mr Still.
I don't think there are so many errors. Um, eh, I can't recall going to see the secretary, but it may well have been that I, I said to the secretary, uh, that, um, it looks like, uh, PWC are one of several parties that might do some work, remembering that she was at PWC too.
Hmm, exactly.
So it might have just been for information's sake, and probably just to possibly assure everybody that the proper, uh, governance was in place. Um.
Can I, when, when we, you, you said before that you were looking back at the minutes at that period of time, I think one year and two months that Miss Stubbs was recorded as being an advisor to the board. Um, I asked you about that, and my recollection is you said, um, that she was involved in uh, providing some training to CFO or providing some advice to the CFO, is that correct?
Coaching, yes, not to the board.
Was that the extent of her involvement?
Yes, yes.
Are you aware that she was also a member of the Finance and Performance Committee until the end of two thousand and sixteen?
Well, no, because if she wasn't on the board, then she wasn't on any committee.
I'm looking at the attestation statement that you signed, um, for the local health district between July two thousand and sixteen um, and thirty June two thousand and seventeen, so the sixteen, seventeen financial year. Um, and it refers to Miss Stubbs as an advisor, being a member of the Finance and Performance Committee. Uh, it then says term finished on thirty November two thousand and sixteen. She was a member of, it says during the financial year, Finance and Performance Committee comprised of following membership. And then it has.
She would not have been at any Finance Performance Meeting or received any material at any time that she was not, uh, standing at the board.
Can I ask you, Mr Doy, because you were chair of the Finance and Performance Committee at that time? Do you recall Miss Stubbs being at those meetings?
No, I don't recall her being at any of the meetings.
Why would she be listed as a member of the Finance Performance Committee in the attestation statement saying term finished, term finished, on thirty November two thousand and sixteen? The term of her membership of the committee, why, why, this is the, this self-attestation is pretty much the only thing we can rely on when it comes to the governance of the board. Are you saying that this statement is incorrect, Mr Still?
W- what I can say is that wherever Miss Stubbs was not present at the board because she'd stood down over these perceptions, or, or when she had resigned, she would not have been present at any committee meeting or received any material.
On the face of the minutes, you agree that she should step down in May two thousand and fifteen. She's still present, recorded as present at board meetings until August two thousand and fifteen, and then she's an advisor, recorded as an advisor for the purposes of the board minutes, and now we find out that she was a member of the Finance and Performance Committee that was directly involved in the work with PWC at the same time that she said that she had stepped down in order to do the work for PWC on the other side of it.
Yes, that, that is certainly.
How, how do you think that looks?
Pretty poor. It's, it's an error.
Which bit is an error?
That she was a member of the committee. She was not a member of the committee at any time that she was not standing at the board or after she'd stood down from the board.
So the attestation statement is an error?
It must be.
Are there other errors in your attestation statements? That's a pretty big error.
No, I don't know.
Uh, so you're asking us to believe that the attestation statement is an error, and that numerous parts of the minutes are also errors?
Certainly there are elements of the minutes that, uh, are likely not correct, in the way you put them, yes.
It's not the way I put them, it's the way that the minutes are. Um, they are very clearly painting a picture of a conflict of interest or potential, we'll call it potential conflict of interest, being disclosed. The board noting it as an issue, saying it's going to speak to the ministry about it, and then sometime later, after there's been periods of absence and, um, apologies and all the rest of it, we get finally the board agrees, yes, you really ought to step down, and then we still have the involvement of Miss Stubbs deep within your organisation until the end of November two thousand and sixteen, a year and a half after she's going to step down?
There are several things about that. Um, there, there were different pieces of work. Each of those pieces of work were um, whole unto themselves. We did not expect at the end of any of those pieces of work for further work to be necessary. And therefore didn't see it as necessary that she leave the board entirely. But when it became clear that there was a much piece, bigger piece of work to do, then it was clear that she should stand down, and she raised that. She was, she was the first to raise that. Now, she did say that she would continue to help the CFO. I do not know when that ceased.
Mr Still, could I ask a, a, a general question here? Throughout all this period, um, that we've been talking about and the circumstances that the chair has outlined and the interconnections, uh, between the board and the area and consultancies, particularly PWC, at any stage did the board or any, um, instrument to, to, of govern- governance seek to review your governance mechanisms and processes? You, you're, you're declaring quite a lot of confidence in them. Was there any benchmarking or any attempt to check that your perception of, of the veracity of your processes was indeed correct?
Uh, externally, not to my recollection. Certainly internally, uh, in the in-camera sessions of the board, uh, there was always a, a, a conversation about the appropriateness of what was going on, um, but that applied to all manner of things, not just theirs. Uh, so I would, I would say not, not externally to answer your question.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Who signs off on the minutes?
Uh, now, at many times during this long period, uh, I would have been travelling, and the deputy chair kindly offered to, uh, help the secretariat, um, draft the minutes in an appropriate way, um, and then they went out to board members.
Including yourself?
Yes, including me.
Yep. Who signs off on them?
Uh, well, it's me. I sign them as a true and correct record of, of the following meeting.
So you believe they were true and correct records at that time?
Uh, yes.
And each of the ones that we've presented to you today are signed by you, aren't they, Mr Still?
They all are.
These are a lot of.
I think all of them are. I was not present at one meeting. For instance, I don't think I was present at the meeting where Mary Foley attended.
April, was that April? April two thousand and fourteen, I think that one is.
You know, that one, I think it is, yeah.
Yep, so you've signed, so you're there in March, you're there in April, the one with Mary Foley, and you're there in May, where we get the, um, sorry, not May, June. Was that two thousand and fourteen? Um, in any event, this is quite concerning, lack of, um, governance procedures when we look at this many errors, um, in just a couple of years, just the ones that we've happened to look at. Does that concern you, Mr Still?
That always concerned me. Um, there are some elements of error there for sure. Uh, that's very disappointing. Um, the, the errors that are there should not be translated to a lack of governance over the essential issues, however. And you're exploring, as I understand it, uh, the governance of Miss Stubbs being on the board at all, whether she was at board meetings at appropriate times, et cetera, and I think that the governance around that was well discussed and fairly strong.
You are asking us though, and again, it comes back to that, um, the statement Mr Buttergig made around this is public money being spent on these consultants.
Yes.
The only assurance and the only disclosure and transparency we get is in terms of the, the minutes that are put on your website.
Yes.
The minutes clearly disclose a very, uh, concerning issue to do with conflict of interest on the face of it.
I think they show.
You're, what you're saying, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are supposed to accept that all of those minutes and records are not correct?
No, that's putting it far too strongly. I think the minutes reflect that Miss Stubbs was not present at meetings when PWC or any work possibly given to PWC as described by management at the table was discussed, and when contracts were, uh, awarded to PWC, she had stood down, and when there looked like being a larger piece of work awarded to PWC by management, she resigned.
I think you must be reading different minutes to me, Mr Still, because the, the minutes I've read have, uh, mention of PWC work at meetings that Miss Stubbs is recorded at being at. Uh, we have an attestation statement that says she was a member of the Finance Performance Committee despite not even being a board member, um, while she had stepped down to work on PWC work for the district. This is what it says on the face of these minutes.
Yes, yes, okay. Well, it, it clearly is the case that she can't be a member of a subcommittee if she's not on the board, or if she stood down, that's clearly the case. So unfortunately, an error.
What were you?
She did not work on the PWC work. Uh, she did not stand down so that she could work on the.
But that's what it says in the minutes. That's what it says in May two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, I know. Um, and.
So is that an error as well? When she says she would like to take an active role in the PWC work, that's an error too?
Uh, they, they are the minutes. All I can tell you is that she, to my knowledge, did no work. She was part of a different part of PWC. The only thing that she undertook to the board was that she would make sure that the best people in PWC were put on the job.
What is the point of these minutes if they're all wrong? I don't understand why, this is, this is what we have, both the minutes
She must have said that.
and the attestation statement.
She must have said that. They are the minutes.
Mr Still, can you see that from a person outside looking in, and I put, put ourselves in the shoes of the taxpayers, which is what we're all here for, it looks like people are going through the motions for aesthetic purposes to create a perception that everything's okay, but it's actually not because there's an embedded relationship between PWC and the department. That is what it looks like.
I can't comment on any relationship with the department, but I can assure you that there was strong governance around Miss Stubbs being on the board and any work awarded to PWC by management.
Can, can I? In terms of strong governance, you're saying that, however, that the, even the most basic element, which is minutes of decisions and discussions, contains numerous errors that you've signed off on?
Well, we did not make a decision to award a contract to PWC, that's purely management. The, the point around her being on the board when she stepped aside and then when she resigned is the board's work. Um, I, I think that the, the minutes broadly reflect the concern of, uh, Miss Stubbs and the board that she not present a perceived conflict of interest, and I think that was a cheat.
It, it looks even worse when you think about it. When you look at, there's, there's a, an agreement that. When you look at, there's an agreement that she ought to step down from the board because of what is agreed to be a conflict of interest or, you know, this is going to breach something, so we'd better take some action, she's going to step down. You've told us that the decisions around consultants, contracts and who gets appointed is the responsibility of management.
Yes.
And yet, in that adviser position, you've said she's, you know, she's in the ear of the people, of the management, who are actually making the decisions to appoint the consultants. It's almost more of a conflict of interest when she steps down and becomes an adviser than when she's sitting on the board. How did you let this happen? And why, if you were so concerned about the governance, why is it not recorded in the minutes? Wouldn't you be very, very keen to show everybody that this was above board?
I did write a note to the board about this, I can't recall the date. Perhaps it was in the middle of two thousand and fifteen about the position of Ms. Dubbins. I think that was fairly clear. But there was the finishing, if you like, of some coaching for the CFO.
Do you think it would be useful for you to provide us with that board letter? Would that be, do you think that would be useful?
I think it's in the minutes, somewhere, let's find it. Can you...
It's not the minutes, but we can...
We can provide that.
If you provide it on notice, it might be useful if we can try and clear this up because at the moment, it's looking pretty bad for the board governance and also for Ms. Dubbins. And, you know, this is very much an example of what we're seeing as being endemic when we come to consultants.
Also, when that document's provided, can we just get the notation of the deliberations and decisions of the board in relation to the reception of that note?
Certainly. I think what happened was that when it was discussed at one of the meetings in the middle of the year, the result was that I would draft it, I'd pen a board memo. And I think that was presented in the papers for the following month.
Okay.
I think you can trace that through the board papers. As they currently stand, there's reference to Mr. Still drafting a paper. We can provide the paper that was drafted. And then the outcome of that is when Ms. Dubbins stepped down from the board.
Except she doesn't. Because we still have her in the minutes. Is there anything you can do to assure us that the minutes are incorrect? Are there any other bits of documentation that can show us that she actually did step down in May as opposed to what the minutes say on the face of them?
Look, we have to take that unnoticed. She's not recorded as having said anything, obviously, because she wasn't there. We'll give that some thought and see whether we can provide something more for you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, I think that's all. Thank you very much for your time. In relation to questions taken on notice and any other supplementary questions, the Secretariat will be in touch. There'll be twenty-one days to respond to those. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, let's restart with our next witnesses. So I now welcome our next witnesses from the Western Sydney Local Health District. I would ask you to please state your name, position, title, and then swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Good morning, Chair. My name's Richard Alcock, and I'm the Chair of Western Sydney Local Health District. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
My name is Loretta Demento. I'm Deputy Board Chair for Western Sydney Local Health District. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. I'll invite you to make a short opening statement if you want to. There's no obligation, but if you've got one, please do.
Chair, I just wanted to say how much we recognise the importance of the matters that the committee are considering. We fully appreciate in our roles day to day as Chair and Deputy Chair the importance for the state as a whole, for the transparency, accountability and good governance of all state instrumentalities. So thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Well, I'll start some questions and then pass over to the government members. You've had a lot of consultants and ex-consultants on your board over the years, more so than some of the other local health district boards. I know that when the reforms were first brought in in two thousand and eleven and then we had the activity-based funding reforms, two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, that there was talk by the relevant minister about the need for boards to have financial advice or to have, sorry, financial expertise. What do you think consultants bring to local health district boards?
Chair, the composition of the boards as set out in the enabling legislation is really looking for a balance of skills. And the balance is made up of those who've got experience in health administration, finance and business. Secondly, clinical governance. Thirdly, an association with community. And then finally, some involvement with universities or research institutes. And so what the ministers seek to do is to bring, first of all, to give effect to the legislation, but to bring a balancing of skills. And certainly in Western Sydney Local Health District, we are looking to balance all of those four attributes in the appointments that are made.
You, your district has the second highest recorded spend of all of the districts since two thousand and eleven on consultants. Why do you think that is?
Well, Chair, I can only speak for the period in which I have been on the board, which is from one January two thousand and seventeen. If we may, what we would like to do is to provide written details to your committee on the work of consultants whilst I've been on the board. I'll ask Ms. Demento to make a few comments as well because she's in a dual role, which she'll describe. But certainly during the last couple of years, there hasn't been a significant use of consultants. When I say couple of years, I'd say four years or so. And we would be pleased to provide specific detail to the committee.
Thank you, because I did notice that there was quite a reduction in the last couple of years. And I wondered how much of that was down to that definition between consulting and consultants, sorry, consulting and contracting. Has that been, I think it was like eighty-eight thousand last year or eight thousand or something? And previously, it had been in the millions. What's, can you explain why that figure did decrease so markedly?
Well, first of all, could I just reiterate that the decision to appoint a consultant or a contractor, indeed any counterpart to a contract, is a decision of the Chief Executive? That is part of the statutory delegation under the Health Services Act. And our role as a board is to ensure that the frameworks that sit above the operation and control of the district, which is the responsibility of the Chief Executive, are appropriate in their governance effect. So the actual use of consultants is within the delegated authority of the Chief Executive. Now, our Chief Executive unfortunately wasn't able to be with us today, but certainly will be available in the future if the committee would like to seek further information.
Thank you.
So the sort of, the reasons why consultants have been used at any time are really within the absolute delegation to the Chief Executive.
So just one last question and I'll pass on to Dr. Kane. So the QDOS Arena Vaccination Hub project that the Western Sydney Health District entered into with, yeah, with P W C, what was that recorded as? How much did that cost? What was it recorded as in the accounts?
So just by way of background, I'm Deputy Chair of the board and also Chair, one of the subcommittees for Western Sydney Local Health District, the Finance Performance and Asset Management. And I've been a member of the Audit and Risk Committee up until June of last year, and I still attend that on a regular basis as a board member.
From when, Mr. Demento? When did you start on that committee?
I started on that committee in June of two thousand and nineteen, six months before being appointed to the board.
Thank you.
For a period of three years. And I can just clarify that from our audited financial statements from June two thousand and twenty-two for the twelve months leading up until that date, there's a total contractor spend of eight point seven million dollars recorded in that. A large proportion of that will be the contract with P W C for contracted services for QDOS. That information is in progress in terms of being put together by our teams, as I understand. But it's in the vicinity of about seven point one million dollars for that twelve months. And there'll be a small component that carries over into the twenty-three financial year.
So that was put down as contracting because it was more in the nature of outsourcing? Is that the, rather than advice work?
That's correct. So we were purchasing resources for all sorts of activities for QDOS. It was a significant operation that we've called it internally military style. There was so much that needed to occur to be able to vaccinate over three hundred thousand people in the short space of time that we did. So it involved all manner of data management, logistics, booking systems and the like. So P W C, among others, were able to provide some of those resources for us.
And was that part of, was part of that, because I think the average person doesn't know that that vaccination centre was being run by P W C.
I wouldn't say it was being run by P W C.
P W C would say it was being run by P W C.
Certainly up to then, that's not, that's not how it was structured.
No, that's okay. So the only way that I found out about P W C's involvement was that they were crowing about it on their website. And there are lots of quotes from the Western Sydney Local Health District talking about, what do we have? We have Jasmine Ellis, General Manager of Integrated Community Health at Western Sydney Local Health District, saying, quote, "Going to P W C saved us," end quote. This is on P W C's website, but I was unable to find any information from the government or the Health District with similar sort of announcements about P W C's involvement in the QDOS Arena. Was that a deliberate decision?
So Chair, we haven't seen the material to which you refer. So if we could take that comment on notice.
Yeah, and perhaps if you look at it on the web, it's got a delightful title of, "A Community of Solvers Delivering the New Equation in Covid Care", which is great consulting speak. And then they have a picture of the QDOS Arena. And then they go on and on about what great partnership it was with Western Sydney Local Health District, with the CEO Graham Loy, giving lots of kudos to P W C for their work at the QDOS Arena. It just struck me as interesting that we hadn't seen any communications come from the Local Health District or from the government in relation to that. Was that a deliberate decision?
So Chair, we obviously can't speak for P W C. And it was important, as you'll recall, that there was no differentiation of one vaccination centre to another. They were all New South Wales Health Vaccination Centres. There was no designation of one centre being led by any particular party. It was a military-style operation. And there were extremely large numbers of people who came together to deliver those vaccination services. If we may, could we please provide the committee in writing with some details of from where that workforce was compiled? Because I'm sure you will take confidence from the greater detail about the number of people in large numbers that were involved.
That would be very useful, Dr. Kane.
And across various organisations, can I just add, the likes of Baxter's, Qantas, others were involved in that. There was, it was several parties that assisted.
My question was to that, you've somewhat answered because it was about the large jump in the spend on contractors, which I had in front of me. And that's partly then explained by the P W C engagement. My question's though, which may partly come on notice from you, but I'd like your initial response, is you've said that P W C didn't run the hub, the QDOS hub. But is that to say they were providing the human resources? Were they the recruitment arm? Were they, I'm just struggling a bit knowing what P W C does to understand their operational aspects of that work that they would have engaged in.
So Dr. Kane, it's a reasonable question. May we give you a wholesome response in writing? Because there were a lot of people, we're happy to designate from where people came and what their roles were. We think that, we hope that once you've got that greater information, it will give you adequate context.
Are you able to tell us how many other consultants as well were approached for that work? Or was it just P W C?
Chair, I would prefer not to make an error. So if we may, we'll quite promptly give you full details of from where a large number of people came. And we've all been to a big stadium. You know how many people are required in every aspect of logistics and safety and service. So there were a large number of people.
I appreciate that, Mr. Alcock. And I guess part of my motivation, just so that you're aware, is we've heard a series of witnesses already talk about ambiguities in how contractors and consultants are classified. And so I'm curious as to how that was done in this case. So that's kind of part of the motivation too, is understanding that ambiguity and seeing what ends up in which part of the balance sheet. I wanted to ask you though about, I know it sort of precedes both of you, but in terms of spikes in spending, in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, there seemed to be quite large expenditure on consultancies. I know you've said you'll give us details, but is there any information you could provide now as to what projects were being undertaken in those years that might have required the large spend? It was over, it's close to about nine million dollars over those two years.
Dr. Kane, we really want to make sure that any information we give you is accurate. So if we may, we will respond in writing. Because as you say, those arrangements preceded our involvement on the board.
Could I just take you to those figures that you articulated earlier? You'll have to refresh my memory, but my recollection was there was quite a dramatic drop in the spend on consultants. Is that right, in the last FY?
Yes, last four or five, since two thousand and seventeen.
I've got some figures I can share with you directly. I've, I've got some figures I can share with you directly from our auditors' financial statements. So for the 12 months ended June 22, consultants' spend was fifteen thousand dollars. Contractors were eight point seven million, as I previously referred to. In 2021, consultant's spend was eighty six thousand dollars and contractors in total was nine hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. That's for those two years.
Sorry, say that last one again, the contractors?
Nine hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in total for all contractor's spend for the district.
Okay. Um, and would it be fair, would it be a fair, fair enough statement to say that that definitional demarcation between contractors and consultants would have to be fairly uniformly applied across different area boards?
Uh, I, I, yeah, I can't.
So that, so that, I mean, in effect, let me cut to the chase. We could, we could compare different local area, district figures accurately because the definition is applied uniformly across all health districts?
I, I can speak to how, you know, our, our classifications and the fact they're subject to the external audit. Sitting on the Audit and Risk Committee, I do have an insight to that because we go through the detail of the annual financial statements each year and have the audit office attend all our meetings. Uh, so in terms of their reporting to us, they would disclose to us if they, in their final reports, if they had any concerns over disclosure deficiencies and the like. Um, nothing along those lines has come to my attention. So from my point of view, with that external review and our internal procedures, I think we've met the definition for classifying the expenses.
And that, but that definition between contractor, when a contractor is a contractor and when a consultant is a consultant, that comes from where?
Uh, the, I, I, I take that in notice in terms of the detailed definitions and guidance that our executive team would have, um, which likely filters through from the ministry in terms of guidance and wider.
From the ministry. So you'd expect that other local area health districts would have the same definitional, definitional parameters?
As I said, I, I'd, I'd expect that to be the case, but I, yeah, could take on notice the specific guidance that they have for us, for that to be provided.
So can you, can you, uh, in terms of your, um, wage spend, we heard on previous evidence this morning that it's roughly, uh, I think 60% of the total recurrent expenditure, which they quoted as about two billion from memory. So one, 1.2 billion roughly in wages. Would that, would be similar for the Western Area Health District?
Uh, committee member, could we please be accurate in the, the information that we give you? So we, we don't have that precise number?
Oh, for the per, sorry, for the purposes of the question, it's not necessary that I have precise numbers. I just, after some ballpark proportionalities, you would have an idea, wouldn't you, of the rough wage bill?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a bit over 60% as you say.
Yeah, and, and what would the total recurrent expenditure be?
Uh, again, taking the, the Chair's point that, uh, we need that to be confirmed, but it's approximate, it was approximately 2.4 billion in expenses for 2022.
Okay, so see, so, so we're talking about 1.3, maybe 1.4 weight ballpark. So the, so the proportion of use of consultants in the Western Area Health District has dropped dramatically. Um, I think the evidence we heard this morning from the South Eastern one was 360,000. You're, you're saying it's dropped down to 80,000. Is there, was there a particular reason as to why it dropped so precipitously in your area?
Uh, so committee member, again, could we please have the opportunity of giving you a accurate answer in writing?
Sure.
Mr. Alcock, if I could ask a follow-up question, um, taking on a theme, uh, that my colleague raised earlier about, um, um, instructions from New South Wales Health. When, um, you were engaging, uh, P W C for the vaccination hub, can you describe what the sort of oversight, that was a large contract with a large amount of money? And I just wondered what the sort of layers of oversight and governance with regards to approvals, discussions, ministerial imprimata? What, what was the approval process for that large spend on that contract?
Uh, so, so Dr. Kane, um, may we please give you this information in writing? Um, it was a very compressed period of time. I think the date, the number of days between the request to stand up the, uh, the vaccination centre and opening the facility was, was about two weeks. Um, and, uh, we did go through proper process. And if I may, what we'll do is we'll set out for you in writing, um, what process we followed during that two-week period.
Mr. Primrose?
Just briefly, and hopefully you won't need to take this one on notice. It's, it's in terms of board processes. I presume one of the first things that would happen at your board would be the adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting? Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And so the minutes are circulated beforehand, board members read the minutes and then I presume there's a motion, something like, um, that these minutes be adopted as a true and correct record?
Yes.
Okay. Included in those minutes, um, then would be summaries of all the various reports that were considered at the previous meeting?
Uh, so what we do in our minutes is to indicate topics, um, issues of particular relevance for discussion and outcomes. We don't adopt what I'd call narrative style, uh, minutes, which is a record of every aspect of what is put before the meeting and discussed. We tend to have highlights and, um, subject matter and outcomes, um, as the basis of our governance.
So, and then, and then you, as the Chair, would sign off on those?
Yes, that's right.
In relation to the actual reports that are received at the board meeting, um, from various departments and from the executive, I mean, each, what's the resolution? I mean, let's say there's a report from the Finance Committee or the Audit Committee. That, that presumably would go to board members? And then there would be a resolution moved by, um, someone at the board? And presumably that would be that that report be adopted?
Uh, so, um, the minutes of committee meetings do come to the board meetings.
Yep.
But they're, they come as, uh, documents of record of that committee.
Yep.
They are finalised by the Chair of that committee. When they come to the board, we, we don't have a process of adopting minutes, um, that have been in effect adopted by the underlying committee.
So the, so the, so the motion would be that they'd be noted?
Uh, no, we wouldn't even have a motion on them. It would be part of the agenda that there was a discussion of any matters of interest, uh, in those minutes. Um, and to the extent there was a discussion coming out of those minutes, then that would be recorded in our minutes. But we, we do not pass a motion to adopt minutes that have been approved by a.
Or, or even noting. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Alcock, um, I wondered, I, I understand you've been on the board since August 2016. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. I just wondered if across that time, you could outline any changes in governance or in reviews of governance, particularly around the engagements of consultants or contractors? But in any change in governance, including how, uh, the board interacts with New South Wales Procurement, New South Wales Health? Have there been any changes in that time, 2016 to 2023, that you can recall?
Uh, Dr. Kane, that's a very big question over a long period of time. Um, so the board does not engage with the New South Wales Health Procurement Board. Um, that would be a matter by exception for the Chief Executive if there were matters that required the approval of the ministry. So we, we haven't engaged, uh, because we're not looking at contracts, um, uh, with the New South Wales Procurement Board. Um, uh, I mean, obviously there have been changes to the board composition since I became Chair. We continually refer back to the template in the legislation about the composition of the board, uh, seeking to balance skills, manage succession, ensure there's diversity, uh, across the composition of our board. So, uh, Dr. Kane, I would say it's a continuum, you know, and, and it's a continuum of continuous improvement too. You know, we are continuing to seek to do a better job and, um, uh, I think that process is continuing.
Does that mean, so this devolved procurement framework that is administered by the Ministry of Health has the oversight? And it's the CEO who does the appointments and the decision about contractors and consultants? That means the board doesn't really have any oversight of the qualitative nature of those engagements? Is that right?
Uh, so just to confirm, um, under the legislation, the can, management and control of the district is delegated to the Chief Executive. Uh, the role of the board is to ensure that the frameworks of good governance are effective. So I'll, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Mento, just to run through with you how from a oversight perspective, um, we seek to ensure the good governance in the implementation of the management of the district? One, one component of which is in the engagement of contractors.
Yeah, so there's, um, various ways in which we will, um, look to make sure these frameworks are in place and are effective. And it really is a cascading system. Um, we start with a series of, um, the processes and policies that are in place for all employees in terms of the code of conduct and all the things you'd ordinarily ex, expect. Um, we move on to, um, things like, uh, annual attestations and, uh, governance requirements that we have from our committees and particularly on the Audit and Risk Committee. Uh, one of the things we're quite, um, we, we spend some time on is understanding how the organisation, um, has satisfied itself that it's met all the requirements it needs to. Um, and then we move on to things like our internal audit function, which periodically works its way across various, um, areas of, of the organisation, testing that those controls are in, in place. And from time to time, external, other external reviews that occur. Um, so a series of things that we see in place. Um, we are looking constantly as, as, uh, Mr. Alcock mentioned, in terms of continuous improvement and seeking the, you know, the experience of, uh, independent members and others that serve on our Audit and Risk Committee.
So, so thank you for that. So that, that particular piece or aspect of the governance is, would it be fair to say that's more a sort of a mechanical, um, piece in the sense that it's, it, it deals with conflicts of interest and the sorts of things we're talking about this morning in the early line of questioning? Um, is that overs, is there any interaction between the board and the procurement board in health as to those functions? Or is that just all left to the board?
Uh, there's a different, um, interaction. So, um, Mr. Mento has mentioned the annual corporate governance attestation statement.
Yep.
Uh, and that brings together all aspects of the operation of the district, um, across the seven standards of governance, um, which are part of the New South Wales Health Governance Compendium. Uh, and that process does involve a whole of organisation bottom up, which ultimately concludes with the Chair and the Chief Executive providing a umbrella attestation. Uh, and that attestation is provided by 31 August each year to the Secretary of New South Wales Health.
And is part of that attestation, uh, include an economic analysis of, of the use of contractors and consultants? Or is that more, that's more an economic decision of the CEO based on their discretion?
Uh, so, so the CEO is making decisions every day on the, um, appropriate use of the, um, funding that we receive from the ministry?
Yep.
Uh, and ensuring that that's done consistent with the New South Wales Health policies on procurement, uh, and on all of the other policies, um, uh, codes of conduct and the like, which are relevant to the district.
Part of that process, is the CEO required to give an analysis behind the decision-making or the parameters, if you like, a template approach to, yes, in this case we'll use consultants X Y Z. In this case we'll use contractors A B C. This was the rationale behind it. Is there any sort of reporting around that or not really?
Uh, could, could I take that question on notice, committee member?
Yep.
Because there is a, uh, there's a continuum of reporting by the Chief Executive to the ministry and if I could give you a considered response?
Sure.
Can I, um, just one final thing on the QDOS Arena Vaccination Hub? I understand you're going to come back to me with question, with, um, more detail on notice, which is very much appreciated. Um, just as part of that, could you, um, provide information as to where the vaccine supply was secured from? So I understand that P W C had a federal contract for vaccine supply at the time. Uh, I'm particularly interested in whether the vaccines were then tied in, uh, at QDOS to that contract that they already had for supply, whether that gave them advantage over other, you know, contractors or, or outsources? If you could come back to me?
Yes, cer- certainly, Chair. Um, uh, supply chain integrity of vaccines is obviously highly sensitive and, um, I think it's unlikely that P W C would have been part of supply chain of vaccine, but we, we will come back and answer your question.
Mm-hmm. That would be great. Um, my understanding is that that contract was for securing vaccine supply. So I'm not sure how that was done, but that was the, the way that it was phrased. Um, just coming to this issue of conflicts of interests, um, do you, I don't know if you're listening to the South East Sydney, um, Local Health District, um, board members tell us how, sort of, you know, what their process is around, um, recording conflicts of interest? But from your board's perspective, is there a, you know, a central source of, of that information? Is it only ever what's recorded in the minutes that then goes into, you know, another book? Or is there, is there another source of, of where members can disclose conflicts of interest?
Uh, so Chair, um, may I just clarify, these are conflicts of interest or interests relevant to board members?
Yes, potential conflicts of interest for board members.
Sure, sure. Look, I, I think that, um, uh, I think we do the normal thing in governance terms. So, um, there is a register of interests, uh, and, um, after the acknowledgement of country in every meeting, um, I as Chair ask, does anyone have any updates, um, of their declarations of interest? Uh, and then, um, if there are any, which is occasional, um, then that's noted at the meeting and the register is updated and the register is provided in the, um, electronic board pack for every board meeting.
So not in, um, not in your board minutes, but I've read through a number of local health district board minutes now. And there is often reference to, um, the register being sort of circulated and then asking for updates. Um, is there any, I guess, is there a, would we be able to work out what had been disclosed from the board minutes themselves? Or would we have to go to the actual, is there, is there any conflicts of interest or potential conflicts of interest that could have been disclosed but weren't reported in the minutes?
Uh, not, not whilst I've been here.
Thank you. That's very useful. Um, I'll just check if anyone else has any questions. Um, I'm just curious about the, I guess, the information and skills flow between local health districts? So, um, for example, if, uh, you brought in consultants to help you with a particular, um, piece of work, are there any structures for sharing that work across to other local health districts? Or would those other, um, health districts have to source their own advice? Is there any sharing or official sharing of that sort of skills and expertise?
Uh, Chair, if you would like to hear from our Chief Executive, he, he will give you that information directly. So what, what we don't do as board members, we don't become quasi-executives. So there's no instance where board members or boards would be, our board is solely meeting to consider the, uh, business of Western Sydney Local Health District. So there would be no flow from a board member to another district of, um, matters that we would be.
Just so you know where I'm coming from, what I'm trying to look at here is with, with this devolved structure of governance, where we have each local health district responsible effectively. Local health district responsible effectively for their own financial situation, whether that has discouraged collaboration when it comes to. Um, using, um, consultants or whoever on a kind of, you know, economy of scale rather than just at the individual local health district. Level, so does the board ever get advice or, or look at other, what other, uh, districts are doing? And say, oh, that's quite an interesting bit of work, I wonder if we can use some of that, or is there a very strict separation between? Local health districts?
Uh, so the Bureau of Health Information is publishing on a quarterly basis, operational performance. Of every local health district, so it's, uh, usual for. Certainly the Healthcare Quality Committee of our board to be looking at comparative performance.
Yep.
Um.
So if, if.
But, but otherwise, I, I think we'll have to take that question on notice, because I'm not aware of. Um, any, um, any sharing that may well, will occur, but it's a matter for our chief executive.
So for, like, as a hypothetical example, so if you had, um, say a consultant had provided a, a revenue raising. Initiative for one district, um, if you wanted to also embark on a. Um, you know, a project looking at different ways of, of raising revenue, would you have to start from scratch with another consultant or could you? Would you get a discount from that consultant for the work they've already done somewhere else, is there any, any of that happening or is it purely? You all operate as though you're individual entities and there's no.
Chair, Chair, I'm sorry, I, we really need to come back to you.
Understood.
In, in writing, because Loretta and I just don't know.
Okay, um.
Um, just, just on the operation of the board and potential conflicts of interest. Um, understand the minutes of the official reflection of what is, decisions are made and proceedings. In between those meetings, though, it wouldn't be unusual, would it, for board members to have discussions about operational matters? In, in preparation for meetings or subject matter discussions, would it, like, surely those conversations go on?
So, um, we've been quite disciplined that the only place in which. Operational matters of our district should occur is at our board meetings. And should be led by our chief executive, um, so committee member, we, we don't have corridor discussions. Between individual board members that.
Okay.
To our mind, that's the essence of poor governance, so.
And is that, is that out, is that articulated anywhere in writing, in, in any of the sort of the charter or the board's minutes or anything like that?
Uh, look, I'm, uh, it's a principle, it's a convention, it's a principle of good governance that. You discuss matters of rela-, well, you discuss Western Sydney Local Health District matters. Um, either in board meetings or board committee meetings, you don't discuss them elsewhere.
Do, do you think it would be perhaps an idea to document that sort of discipline so that people know? That they're only to discuss things in board meetings and make decisions there, given what we've heard on evidence this morning regarding board minutes?
Um, uh, so, um, every board member of, of our district signs a confidentiality deed. As part of the induction process and that is a universal continuing obligation.
Is it explicit about the confidentiality being only at board meetings or is it just a general confidentiality agreement? That they're not to discuss board matters with third parties?
Um, I'd have to look at the deed of confidentiality, but the general principle is you, you're only. Discussing board matters in the context of.
Would you be able to table a copy of that confidentiality agreement for us?
Yeah, sure, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we use the standard New South Wales Health deed, but we can certainly provide that.
Thanks.
Um, there were a number of recommendations made by the Auditor General in two thousand and nineteen in relation to the governance of local health district boards. Um, and there was a number of, of findings and recommendations in relation to the. Relationships between the board and the chief executive and the chair and the chief executive and, and looking at, you know, the fact that the. The chair is appointed by the, um, the minister, but then you've got, um, also the. Sort of the executives being appointed by the minister and not the board and sort of looking at what those relationships were, um, did you? Sort of take on board any of those recommendations or, like, was there a process where that report got discussed at a board level?
Uh, Chair, could I, could I take that question on notice, because I, I'll have to reflect my, um. Recollection, um, certainly, uh, something as significant as an auditor general's report on. Composition and operation of boards would have been something that, um, we considered, but I, I just can't remember.
Hmm.
When.
Thank you, and I'm asking you these general questions just to, um, to, I guess, inform us as to, um, what the, the process. Would probably be, um, at other sort of local health district boards as well, so, um. Just another one of that ilk, um, I understand that in New South Wales government departments, there is a labour hire cap. Um, so, you know, basically a, a cap on the spend that you can, um, you can make when it comes to government sector. Employees and that this has, has led to a bit of, um, you know, reliance on consultants once you, once you get to your sort of labour hire cap. Um, given that the health structure is devolved into local health districts rather than, and so a lot of staff are sitting at that level. Are you aware of whether that labour hire cap applies at a local health district level?
Uh, no, no, I'm not, no, I'm, I'm not.
Could you perhaps come back?
Our context is, um, we have a service agreement, um, we have a, um. A budget that's so, associated with that service agreement, um, the chief executive makes recommendations on the. Um, funding to deliver the services that we contract to provide New South Wales Health. And that service agreement comes to the board and is part of the statutory approvals of the board. Um, and I don't recall whilst I've been Chair any discussion of, um, labour caps.
Okay, that's very useful, are the, um, are there KPIs attached to that service agreement in terms of other? Non-financial things that the board needs to do?
And it's, um, it's a publicly exhibited document, signed each year.
Thank you, any other questions from the committee members? No, I think we will end it there, thank you very much, that's been incredibly helpful, um, to the extent the questions were taken on notice or, um. There are supplementary questions, the committee secretary will be in touch, um, and it will be a twenty one day timeframe, uh, to respond. Thank you very much, we're going to take a fifteen minute break, uh, and then we will be back with our next, uh, set of witnesses at eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Excellent. Welcome back. And now welcome our next witnesses from P W C Australia. Could I ask you to each please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Kristin Stubbs, Acting Chief Executive. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
And Nathan Slesinger, the National Health Lead at P W C. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. You have the opportunity now to make a short opening statement if you like. If you choose to do so, if you could keep it to a couple of minutes.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you Chair. I welcome the opportunity to appear here today to share P W C Australia's perspectives on the important issues being considered by this inquiry. At the outset, I'd like to acknowledge the questions that were raised in last week's hearing and this morning regarding my role as a board member on the South East Sydney Local Health District. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to clarify my role on the board and any questions you may have. I was careful to follow the appropriate guidelines during my time on the board. I have been Acting CEO at P W C Australia for six weeks. So there may be some questions here today that I need to take on notice. I also want to acknowledge the news over the weekend. We announced a new CEO, Kevin Burrows, from overseas, his pending immigration clearance. I will remain as Acting CEO until he arrives and I'm committed to a smooth transition. My focus is on our 10,000 staff members. We've also reached an agreement in principle to divest our federal and state government consulting businesses to Allegro Funds, a Sydney-based private equity firm. We've taken this step because it is the right thing to do for our public sector clients to ensure continuity of service and to protect the jobs of the many talented people in our government business, over 1,500 jobs. P W C Australia will make no financial gain from the transaction. Chair, P W C Australia is an Australian-owned and operated business. It employs 10,000 people nationwide, including almost 5,000 across New South Wales. We are really proud of the work we do with New South Wales Government. Our teams work incredibly hard in a competitive market to deliver value to the New South Wales Government and by extension, the people of New South Wales, and we bring to bear specialist expertise and skills. In particular, we are proud of the work our teams did at an unprecedented time during the COVID-19 pandemic, including helping to stand up the Kudos Bank Arena Max Vaccination Centre in just nine days. It's also important to acknowledge that we don't always get things right. We deeply regret the breach of confidential federal tax policy information that happened around eight years ago, and I deeply apologize for that. We failed the standards we set for ourselves as an organisation and I apologize on behalf of our firm. We have made changes to our firm relating to this matter and we will make more. In the six weeks since I took over as Acting CEO, we have commenced a detailed accountability investigation supported by two legal firms that will be completed shortly. Appointed Dr Ziggy Swetowski A O to lead an independent review of the firm's governance, accountability and culture. We committed to appointing two non-executive directors to P W C's governance board. And yesterday, we announced the divestment of our government business as I just mentioned. Chair, at the beginning of this opening statement, I acknowledge the questions regarding my role on the South East Sydney Local Health District. Let me be clear, at all times have I acted with the utmost integrity. This included recusing myself and stepping down where appropriate. I accepted an unpaid position on the board to help the health district to drive better outcomes for taxpayers and patients. And that's what I believe my fellow board members and I achieved. I'm driven by public service, that is why I took the position. Thank you Chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. If we could start then with that announcement yesterday. Is that announcement an admission that P W C simply can't conduct government business in an ethical manner?
No, it's not. It's an announcement that looks at the situation and what is best for our people today and to ensure continuity of service to our government clients. That's the reason we did this. There will be no question around management of conflicts at all in a completely separate business.
So what are the terms of this separation then? If we have, because from the face of it, it looks very much like a PR exercise as a, you know, an excising of the growth that is causing, that's causing the problems of the cancer. And instead, rather than actually dealing with the issues that, you know, brought these, the current scandals to light, that you're simply now carving it, carving all business, all government business just out of P W C. How are we supposed to take that seriously as a, you know, as a, I guess, a valid measure of P W C reform and seeing that you've, you know, actually learnt something from this?
It's a very serious measure. It is a very big strategic move by us to divest a significant part of our business at no financial gain or profit to P W C. As we've previously publicly said, we started to look at the ring fencing of this business to address the perceived conflicts. But after careful consideration of that, the ring fencing, which is basically operational and financial separation, we decided that that didn't go far enough and we did make the difficult decision to divest our government business completely. So the divestment will create two completely independent firms, ensuring that there is no disruption to vital services to public service clients. And as I mentioned, there are 15 jobs at risk here that we are committed to making sure protected.
So I ask you again, is this an admission that P W C simply can't conduct work for the government in an ethical manner under the current structure?
No, it is not.
In terms of this separation, does this mean that P W C will do no work with government at all? Is it no government client work?
We're still in the process of determining whether there will be some aspects to work through. For example, there may be some external audit work that we do that remains within P W C. But the vast majority of the government work will be done in the new, by the new entity.
So for instance, the actuarial work that P W C currently does for iCare, would that be part of this new company or would it stay with P W C?
Look, we're still working through the details of this and there'll be more announcements to come. We've just announced an intention to dispose of this business yesterday. And we have exclusivity with Allegro, as we mentioned. There'll be more announcements to come on the details.
Are any of the partners going to, what I understand has been called Bell for now, the new entity, the same partners who were involved in the tax leak?
I don't believe so, no.
Do you know?
No one directly involved in the, in the tax confidentiality matter will be going, no.
So you know who those people are?
I've already, that's already been announced in, in the press, the four individuals who are at the heart of the tax confidentiality matter.
But not the broader group of people who were on the email distribution and who were potentially involved?
Would you like me to clarify?
Yes, please.
So, as you can appreciate, it is very, very important that due process is followed when we do such a serious investigation in relation to things like a confidentiality breach. And so we have named the four individuals who were directly involved with the confidentiality breach. And then there were some other partners who were directed to go on leave. And we are working through a detailed process to investigate at the moment any accountability that needs to be taken. There were 63 other people who received confidentiality, they received confidential information, but they had no, most of them, and we're just working through the investigation, but most of these people had no context that confidential information was being shared. And can I just state that there were people, junior people in the tax practice, executive assistants, a range of different people who received that information. So surely it's appropriate that we follow due process. Once that due process is finished and the investigations are complete, we've engaged two external law firms to help us with this investigation. We will name anyone who has done anything wrong.
Okay, so there are the four named partners, there are the 63 other potential people who, as you say, an investigation is being conducted to ascertain whether or not. They should also step down or be named. Are any of those 63 people where an investigation is still ongoing going to be moved to this new entity, Bell?
No one who has done anything wrong in terms of our investigation outcomes will be moved to this entity, no.
So you can't guarantee it right now, but presumably before it happens, okay?
Sorry, we're still working through the details of what is going to be in and out of the new, the new vehicle.
The assurance that you gave to the New South Wales Government on the first of June in relation to none of those people involved in the tax leak being part of the work that P W C is currently doing for the New South Wales Government, was that including that broader group of 63 as well as the four or was it, is it only in relation to the four?
I'm happy to take that, yes, that's correct.
So it was all of, so basically all of them?
Yes, so at that point in time, we felt it appropriate whilst this investigation was ongoing to provide that assurance, yes.
And were any of them working on that work before you gave that assurance at any point? Have they been taken off actively or were they?
I'm not sure. I can, I can take that on notice for you.
Thank you. Are you going to go to the other firm, Mr Slesinger? Is that a, are you going to the, yes, we'd be part of that Bell group?
To be honest Chair, my focus has been coming here today and I'll certainly need to put some thought toward that following today, yes.
Okay, because the, the announcement did refer to not just government services but health and it was confusing. So does that mean that, that your, notionally your department or your, your sort of group would also go to this new entity?
Yeah, so the work that P W C does for public health services, so health services run by the government would be in scope, yes.
Do you think that this is a model that the other accounting, you know, big accounting consulting firms should follow also? Do you think it's?
Oh, it's, it's not really my place to kind of comment on what the other firms should or shouldn't do. I think as Ms Stubbs has noted, we've taken this action on the basis that we feel it's the appropriate step to take. But you'd need to ask the other firms that.
Did the, the global partnership suggest this to P W C Australia as a way to, as I said before, sort of excise the growth that has become the problem area here in order to save the rest of the organisation's government work across the globe?
No, this transaction was completely led by P W C Australia.
This transaction, maybe we'll leave, no, let's leave it there for now. Can we go back to the other, the other issues that have been sort of, I guess, plaguing?
Excuse me Chair, are we, should we complete one area at once or, I just wanted to put one on?
We were on time, but that's, that's all right, we can, if, we were timing, that's all right for the, that's okay. But I'm happy to, I will take that, no, no, it's fine, let's go over because you might want to continue with this line of questioning and then I'll take that minute again later, that's fine.
No, I think you should finish it Chair.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the minute's gone.
I like the minute. Um.
Thirty seconds now.
I'm going to ask a very quick question, just in this last 30 seconds. Does, does P W C hold investments in sort of any, I guess, any of its, if its clients? What's, what's the, P W C Australia, what level of investment do they have in, in shares or other businesses?
So as would be reasonably common, there are, we do, we do occasionally have investments in, in businesses. They're not, they're not clients, but they would be, you know, there would be investments in, in businesses that were aligned to our business.
I will now pass over to Dr Kane.
Thank you Chair, my apologies for the confusion. Thank you, Ms Stubbs. How can P W C prove that there haven't been any breaches of trust, of sharing of information that has occurred on the work or advice, on the vast amount of work you've done in the New South Wales, for the New South Wales Government? So how can you prove that to us?
I might ask Nathan to comment.
So, I mean, what I would firstly say is that, you know, the, the work that we do to ensure that the high standards that we hold for our partners and our staff in terms of conflict management and confidentiality and ethical behaviours, clearly on occasion, we haven't done well enough and I think that is well documented. And we will continue to strive to do better. To the question of how do we, how do we provide that assurance? So areas like conflict management and confidentiality and ethical behaviours are part of our code of conduct. As you would imagine, we have a range of policies and standards within our business to address that. We train our staff and our partners continually through each year. And, you know, where, where those standards aren't upheld, we have a consequence management framework which will lead to either dismissal or financial penalties. or financial penalties or other issues. And so with all of those things, it is our intention that those standards are upheld. And in signing engagements and contracts with New South Wales Government, the terms of those engagements also include things like treating confidential information appropriately.
Thank you for that, Mr. Schessinger. How much comfort are we to take from that description you've just given? Given the way that P W C provided or didn't provide questions to the Tax Office and other authorities that sought information about the issues that have been well canvassed in other areas, how is it that we're to take any comfort from some kind of internal process and culture that you refer to, which seemed not only to allow for such problems to arise, but also it would seem some sense to cover up some of those instances as they occurred, certainly not to be as forthright as you could be on those?
Yeah. Look, as I said in my opening statement, we deeply regret and I deeply, deeply apologise for the confidentiality breaches that happened back in two thousand and fifteen and the lack of, you know, effective response to that in our firm. I completely acknowledge that. That did occur, as I said in the open letter, in a small part of our tax practice. We have no reason to believe that any of these issues relate to New South Wales Government at all. But obviously if we did have specific instances, we would deal with those instances, as Nathan said, through our consequence management process and notify the relevant people.
Could I ask a bit more about the consequences? As far as I could see in looking at your Senate inquiry submission, it seems to be that it's managed largely through the performance review process. And it would seem to be that perhaps bonuses might be jeopardised. Could you explain what kinds of consequences, aside from the four people who are no longer at P W C? And you said that there are some people who have been stood aside. Could you explain what other consequences there have been for others without necessarily obviously naming them? But also, how often are these sanctions applied and what are the scale of them?
Yeah, so just with respect to the tax matters, particularly as I mentioned, I became the acting CEO six weeks ago, a bit over six weeks ago. We commenced a very, very detailed root cause analysis at that time. As I mentioned, I think in my opening letter, we expect the results of the investigation into the confidentiality matter to be completed shortly. We have been doing a very, very thorough investigation involving help from two external law firms and so we will expect to announce consequences, you will see that publicly and they will be severe. I would also just note that we are also engaging with and cooperating with external regulatory authorities as well as part of those investigations into the tax matters.
Could I just explore this sale to Allegro? Is there any financial relationship between P W C and Allegro in either a financial interest or any contractual arrangements pre-existing?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So the idea is that P W C sends a signal to the market that they're quarantining this business off to Allegro, presumably for brand reputational restoration, which is understandable. A book value of one dollar, meaning that the business is essentially worth nothing. Presumably Allegro can see some upside on this, given the existing contractual relationships with the New South Wales Government. How will that work unless P W C can guarantee that beyond those sixty-three partners, there haven't been other employees who have been privy to that sensitive information who are now going across to Bell?
Yes, we will make sure that all staff and partners included in that transaction have not done the wrong thing in terms of these tax matters. Anyone who's done the wrong thing, when we complete our investigations, we will announce. And those people will not be going across to Allegro as part of the Bell transaction.
And you're confident that when that happens, you can guarantee that all those employees going across will be totally oblivious to what happened previously and not privy to any information?
As I said, this is a highly complex matter that's involved an investigation that's taken weeks. Okay, there will be a detailed, the results of a detailed investigation announced shortly. If you can put yourself in the position of a young person who gets copied on an email and does not understand any of the confidential information that might have been shared, then, you know, those people will be, you know, effectively cleared through this process. And so we will announce anyone who has done the wrong thing and those people will not be going across this transaction.
How, what do you say to those employees who might be thinking, perhaps logically so, I go across to this new entity, do I have a choice? That's the first question. And secondly, if I do, if Allegro can't grow that book based on the reputational damage, then where's my employment security going forward?
So this whole transaction is designed to protect a significant number of jobs, fifteen hundred jobs. And so we believe the best opportunity for those people is to go across to the new entity, to work with the new entity with absolutely no even risk or perception of conflicts because it'll be completely separate from P W C.
No, but just to tease that out a little bit, there's no guarantee in this sort of transactional parameters, if you like, the specifics of the sale. Is there employment guarantees in place at Allegro?
We've just announced the intention today to work with Allegro, those details will be forthcoming.
Ms. Stubbs, if I could go back to something you just mentioned in your answer to Mr. Buttergig. You mentioned that the investigation had been ongoing for six weeks. Why did it take so long for you to have an internal investigation when the issues to do with Mr. Collins have been on deck for a number of years? So why is it that it's only now? Because you're talking as if there was some intense time pressure that has suddenly borne down upon you. But you've known about these issues for some time. Could you explain that a bit, please?
Yeah, so the issues with respect to the confidentiality agreements haven't been known for way back to two thousand and fifteen. I think we first learned at P W C that there was even a confidentiality agreement in place in March twenty twenty-one. However, the deep root cause analysis and deep investigation into this really started, you know, looking at all of the aspects that I've talked about in my open letter, including the cultural aspects, really only started six weeks ago.
Okay. And do you expect that New South Wales Government will continue all its contracts with this new entity, with this new structure?
That's a matter for the New South Wales Government to comment on.
And what would be, do you think, a fair level of scrutiny to expect should those continue or should there in the future be New South Wales Government contracts?
Again, I believe that's a matter for New South Wales Government and the new entity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stubbs, for your attendance here today. Just interested in terms of the new entities. So of course, P W C is a partnership structure. In terms of how that new entity is working, how many partners will be transferring across?
That's still been worked through, it will be over a hundred.
And will those partners retain any ownership in P W C at present?
No.
So they will all divest across to Bell?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And just as you foreshadowed in your opening statements, in terms of your own involvement with the South East Sydney Local Health District, just wanting to know, how was it you came to be appointed to that board in the first place?
I was appointed in the normal way, I think there's an application or expression of interest process and I was appointed by the Minister of the Day, which was Minister Gillian Skinner.
And what motivated you to apply to be a part of that board?
So I am delivered, sorry, I am devoted to serving the community. I've been recognised for that, I do many things to contribute my time. I sought to take an unpaid position as a board member because I thought I could do some good with my financial expertise for the taxpayers of New South Wales.
Now, Ms. Stubbs, your background is in the audit practice, is that correct?
That's right.
So you had no involvement in the health practice?
No, I have had some involvement in the health practice, so there was a time when I was involved in the health practice and actually leading our health business from, I believe, around two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so that predated your time on the board?
It did, but it gave me the expertise from both a financial and a health perspective to feel I could contribute.
And with respect to your time on the board, there has been some discussion about work that was won by P W C during your time on that board. Do you want to provide some information to the committee with respect to the steps that you took during that period?
Yes, I will, thank you. So whenever I became aware of any work that was a potential for P W C to be appointed on, I either accused myself or stood down, depending on the circumstances. So I know that there is a minute in the twenty-seven May two thousand and fifteen minutes that talks about me playing an active role, for example. I did not play an active role, I regret not correcting those minutes. So when it did become clear that P W C would have an ongoing role, I stepped down from the board fully. There was some engagement in two thousand and fourteen that I thought would be a relatively short engagement, it turned out to be longer. I came back to the board for, I was recused for that whole time. I came back to the board for a very short period of time, thinking that that work would be over. The management team who procure this work informed me that there would be more work to come and I was the one who said I must stand down from the board and I did that in August of two thousand and fifteen.
And after you stood down from that, stood down from the board, did you then involve yourself in any of the work that P W C was doing for the Health District?
Not at all.
And did you have any financial benefit for that work that was won by P W C from that Health District?
Not directly, I am a partner at P W C, which was obviously declared as the reason for the conflict or the perceived conflict.
Thank you. And also just turning back to, just in terms of some of the commentary that was made by the Chair at the time, he, or to the committee earlier today, I think he indicated that from his recollection, your involvement in that was saying that you'd get the best people at P W C to be involved in that project. Was that something you did or do you think that's appropriate to have made that assurance to the board?
I can't recall making that assurance, I was deeply committed to the Health District. So if I felt that, you know, the right team wasn't being put forward, I would definitely have noted it. But I don't recall that specific assurance. I did make an assurance around a mentor role that I had with CFO, which I had had through the whole period of my board employment, my board employment, sorry, my board engagement. And that mentoring involved very high-level discussions around the role of a CFO and certain strategic matters. It was nothing to do with the P W C work and again, no payment was made to me. There was a board minute on the eighteenth of August two thousand and fifteen that was presented to the board at the twenty-sixth of August meeting that clarifies all of these governance arrangements, I believe it was referred to in the previous session. I do have a copy of that minute if you would like to.
Yes, please.
Thank you. And just returning to Allegro, just briefly before I hand over to my colleague, is the vision for Allegro to be co-located with P W C? Or is it the vision that Allegro, oh, sorry, Bell in being transferred to Allegro will be in different premises and completely separate from P W C?
Obviously, we've only just announced the intention to do the transaction, but assuming it does go ahead, it would be, there would be separate locations.
Thank you. To Mr. Fain.
Thank you, and thank you for your appearance today. The Chair of the Health District earlier indicated that the provision of the consultants was the remit of the CEO as opposed to the board in effect. Did you have any hand in advocating for or attempting to convince the CEO of the merits of P W C over any of the other firms that might have been tendering for the work?
No, I don't believe so, not at all.
Did you have conversations with the CEO or any of the executive team at the Health District around those contracts?
No, I made sure that when the decisions were being made around any of the contracts and of course, I only became aware of them if they were notified to me, that I was not involved in any of those discussions.
Okay. So presumably, as a member of the board, you would have to have been made aware that the contracts were coming up, that P W C was interested in perhaps tendering or applying for those contracts. So you would have had, I guess, some pre-notice that they were either coming up or were to be potential issues that were being put to you either through your role as P W C or via the board in order for you to be able to declare that there was a conflict of interest and recuse yourself. So in relation to when that was occurring, did, how did you manage your internal risk within P W C as opposed to, I guess, the managing of the risk through the board position?
Yes, so all of my actions with respect to the South East Sydney Health District were taken in my capacity as a board member. If I was aware, or when I became aware of any discussions at all, I either accused myself or stood down as appropriate, I've already stated that. We do have a conflict management process within P W C and if the, if there were any discussions happening, I would have been alerted to that and similarly made sure that that was communicated with the Health District.
I guess we know now, though, that that internal P W C conflict of interest programme isn't exactly robust, is it?
Well, we do actually have, you know, conflict management procedures. Obviously, the tax matters that have been, you know, very publicly recorded relate to some very specific instances around the confidentiality agreements that were in place. That's not to say that we don't have work to do. We obviously accept that we need to improve our systems and processes. And the fact that, you know, those particular confidentiality breaches, you know, remained uninvestigated or unreported for so long is of deep concern to me and that's why we're doing all of the things that I outlined in the opening statement.
Has that tax team done any work for the New South Wales Government at any point in time in the last ten years?
I'm not aware, but we can absolutely take that on notice. That team was an international tax team, so I'd be surprised, but happy to take that on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you've got six seconds.
We won't waste it like what happened before.
So let's just, just finishing off then, Ms. Stubbs, in relation to that board appointment that you had. Did you work with Dr. Foley when you were at P W C in the Health Department, in the Health Group?
Yeah, Dr. Foley, when she was at P W C, was the Chair of our National Health Practice and so I did work with her at that time as well.
So you knew each other?
We knew each other, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Did she suggest that you step onto the board? Was there a, how did you become aware that there was a vacancy on the board?
No, Dr. Foley didn't suggest that I step onto the board, to my recollection, at all. I mean, obviously it was a long time ago, I don't recall that. What was happening at the time was that health districts were being created and there was a need for people with expertise to go onto these boards to help them, to help them with their finances and this Health District really did need help with its. And this Health District really did need help with its finances and, and for other areas. And so that, the people who were appointed to the board were, were appointed, appointed by the Minister, not by the Secretary, which Dr Foley became.
When you were in that Health Group, were you part of the group that advised New South Wales Health on the new health structure that created these, these boards or the precursors to these boards?
So just to clarify, we, we did one piece of work, which, one or two pieces of work which involved the execution of the, the policy, so effectively project management and, and execution. We didn't, to my knowledge, advise on the actual policy itself or the, or the structures.
So in the, the note that you've handed up, and in your statement before, you were talking about that meeting in May two thousand and fifteen where the board agrees that you should step down. But in your statement just previous, I think in response to one of the questions that was asked, you said that you stepped down in August two thousand and fifteen, which is also the date of the, the minute that you've passed up. Why were you still recorded as being a board member until August two thousand and fifteen? And by your own statement, didn't step down until three months after this conflict of interest and the agreement to step down had been made?
Yes, so as I recall, what happened was that I became aware in May two thousand and fifteen that P W C was to be appointed to do some significant work, some further significant work, at which time I said I cannot continue on the board and I will need to step down. I was in the middle of some complex work, unrelated complex work with the CFO. I transitioned that work and attended the next two meetings, I believe, and then formally stood down in, in August.
Was it a mistake not to step down earlier?
No, I don't believe so, in the sense that there was important work to transition. I did make sure that no P W C work was discussed at any of the meetings, otherwise I would have recused myself.
You were only a board member for two and a half years, and one and a half years of that you were either an apology or on leave of absence or whatever. Wouldn't it have been better for you to have stepped down and allowed someone else to take that spot on the board?
Look, if I had realised that there was going to be so much work needed and that P W C was going to be engaged in the way it was, I would have said that from the start, which is why I did end up coming forward and saying I must stand down.
So then you became an advisor, and in this, again, in this note that you've handed up, it was involved in mentoring the Chief Financial Officer. And we know from the discussion previously with Mr Still that this goes until the end of two thousand and sixteen, where you're an advisor. No payment was made, you were doing that just out of the goodness of your heart.
Some people do that sometimes.
Some people do do that, Mr Fang. So in that position, presumably, you would have still been getting quite a lot of information about the operations of the district and the, and the board.
So I think, as was acknowledged in the previous session, that there was a lack of clarity around the minutes and the reason why I was recorded as an advisor. I was not an advisor, to my recollection, at all. In that time, I had stepped down.
But you were a member of the, of that committee, according to the attestation statement?
Yes, but that's, that's a matter for the Health District to answer, I, I was not a member of the committee. But what I can, what I can say is that I did personally, as I do regularly, mentor the CFO. It became a very busy period for me after the time I had stepped down anyway. So I do recall having a couple of meetings with the CFO about some of the more strategic and difficult, complex issues she was dealing with. Remembering at the time, this is a very, very large organisation where you've got someone stepping up into a role and she just needed support. There was no, the, the P W C work that was happening at the time was completely separate, nothing to do with any of the discussions I had with her.
Ms Stubbs, did you use any of the information and insights that you had gained at the South East and Sydney Local Health District? And give that to the benefit of PricewaterhouseCoopers in any way when it came to them pitching for additional work from the Health District?
Look, I really don't think so, I, I, I honestly don't. I was very careful to, you know, to follow the guidelines that the New South Wales Government sets out.
Even in that advisor role, though, because that wasn't governed by those same rules, was it?
I was not an advisor, just to be clear. I mentored the CFO and I had a couple of meetings with her after I stood down from the board, I wasn't an advisor.
Was your conduct in relation to the South East and Sydney Local Health District or your role within P W C at the time made the subject of a referral to ICAC?
I have no knowledge at all of any referral to ICAC, I think the Chair also said that this morning, no knowledge.
Thank you. In the time I've got left, I just want to ask, I understand there were nine partners who were actually sent home as part of the P W C tax scandal. I know that four of them have been named, who were the other five?
As I've said already today, we are nearing completion of a detailed investigation into the tax matters as it relates to the confidentiality breaches. When the investigation is complete, anyone who has done anything wrong will be disclosed.
That's very different to the sixty. Like, these people were, it was sufficient evidence that you've managed to, you know, take that step to send them home. Why can't you tell us the names?
Our investigation is still ongoing, we will shortly be announcing any names of anyone who has done anything wrong.
Don't you think that the Australian public have the right to know who those nine people are?
The Australian public will have the right and will receive the names of people who were associated in, with this, who've done anything wrong.
And in the meantime, we're to take your assurance that they are not working on, on government, there's been no other leaks and there's been no other ethical breaches by these people?
They are not, the, the nine that you're referring to are not working at all. Mr.
Ms Stubbs, could I just take you back to this Allegro business? Were you involved in the negotiations for the sale?
I am the acting CEO and obviously have endorsed the sale, I've not been involved in the detail.
So can I ask you, wh- why do you think Allegro would take on the liability? How many employees are going across?
We haven't finalised that yet, as we're working through the deal, it will be in excess of fifteen hundred.
Why do you think Allegro would take on such a massive liability, given the brand damage that's occurred at P W C transferring those employees across?
Well, I think that's not a matter for me to comment on.
Well, but you, you oversighted and signed off on the negotiations, didn't you?
I'm, I'm the acting CEO, I take responsibility. But the motivations of Allegro and their risk decisions are for them to answer.
And you, you guarantee that there's been no sort of ex gratia payment between P W C and Allegro?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, what I mean is there's been no transfer of any financial interest, shares or money from P W C to Allegro that's not apparent on the face value of the one dollar, the book sale.
So as I've said, there'll be no financial gain as a result of this sale. We're still working through.
No, no, no financial gain to P W C, I understand that.
I suggest you actually let her finish her answer before.
Well, I was clarifying the question.
Well, you can clarify it after.
All right, order.
Finished answering.
So, so the question is not whether or not P W C has gained a financial interest. The, the question is, is has Allegro gained a financial interest other than the one dollar sale price?
Well, Allegro, that's a matter for Allegro to comment on in terms of the opportunity that they see for this business. But I would just say that we believe by having two completely independent firms, there will be no disruption to client service. We play a vital role in providing services to government. But also, we're making sure that approximately fifteen hundred or more staff have job security.
Well, to, to go to the job security again, how confident is P W C that that job security will be for some sort of perpetuity, given the dubious nature of that book value? You've just sold it for one dollar.
We are confident that, that the transaction is a good one and offers the best opportunity for our staff to thrive and succeed.
Can I ask you about this line of questioning that the Chair pursued earlier? There's some, there was some ambiguity around whether or not there'd still be services, actuarial services, I think, to ICARE from P W C. Are there any other areas where P W C could potentially be involved in work for the New South Wales Government that we're not aware of? Notwithstanding the, the quarantining off?
With regards to the new business being set up?
No, no, so P W, P W C as, as the entity left behind after the transfer, will, is there, are there any other areas of government business that P W C will still be concerned in, tangentially or otherwise?
Sure, yeah, so, so it is, it is the intention to move over to this new business. The, the work that P W C Australia to, to date would have been doing with government. I think as Ms Stubbs noted earlier, there would be probably one area around statutory audits that need to occur, which I think we will be discussing over the course of the coming days and weeks as we finalise that transaction. But to my knowledge, that's the only, that's the kind of only area that, that, you know, we, we'll need to kind of.
So statutory audits, what about local government?
So local government would be, you know, in what we're calling the perimeter of the new business as, as government entities. But again, we've just announced it yesterday, we, we need to work through some of these details over the coming.
So we don't, so the government doesn't actually, at this point in time, the government doesn't actually know for sure whether or not P W C will retain any consultancy work.
So what we announced yesterday is that the, the consulting work that we do for government as of today, will be moving into this new entity.
Can, can I ask, again, can you remind me of the date on which the four partners who were released? Can you remind me when, when that happened?
Are you talking about when they left?
When they've been stood, the, the first fall.
When they left P W C, is that what you're asking?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. So the, the four partners who are no longer, who are at the heart of this, who are no longer with P W C, their retirements, their retirement dates, the dates that they left the firm, ranged from thirty June two thousand and eighteen through to October twenty two.
Okay. And the other partners who have been stood down, when was that effective? Can you, sorry, just remind me, I'm sure you've said it, but I just wanted a reminder.
No, so we have, as has been discussed here, asked nine partners to go, or we've directed them to go on leave while our investigation is completed. And that happened a few weeks ago in May.
So prior to, I guess, the extent of the issues with Mr Collins coming to light and, and the Taxation Practitioners Board releasing information late last year and early this year, what were the practices around and conversations around confidential arrangements and codes of conduct? What, what were partners and others required to understand, training they had to undertake prior to, let's say, when you started your investigation?
Yeah, so we do, as I think Mr Slizenger has already indicated, we do have obviously professional requirements and then P W C requirements where we do, we have a, a strong code of conduct. We require confirmations from our partners and staff, we do training. And I would like to mention, obviously, this issue around the confidentiality breaches specifically happened in our tax practice. And so since the time of these breaches, there've been a number of changes made. So we established a, a policy panel to review all complex matters. We put in place additional mandatory training with respect to complex tax advice and confidentiality. And then we did an independent external review of the effectiveness of our tax governance and controls, and that was done by a former Second Commissioner at the ATO. So we have done numerous things to tighten up on our processes since the confidentiality issues first started, started to emerge.
So you seem, it pains to note that this particular breach was in your tax area. Am I to assume from that, that in the other areas you have some kind of proactive auditing process about confidentiality? It gives you a greater level of assurance that this type of behaviour isn't, isn't, or hasn't been displayed in other areas? Why is it that you're more confident in those other areas?
Look, look, we are continually improving. As I said just now, even our tax practice where this breach happened, we've made significant changes in, in recent years. However, we acknowledged in my open letter to the Australian public that we had not handled this issue with the tax confidentiality breaches appropriately. And that went to the leadership of our organisation. And so we do need to step back and really look at our culture, our governance and our accountability. We, we've accepted that, we are leaning into that. Dr Swetowski is in the midst of his review. And we look forward to making the results of his review public when, when they come through. But in terms of, you know, for example, our assurance practice, we have very strong processes in place. We have an Audit Quality Advisory Board, that is an independent board that looks at our audit quality. And we have regular, I mean, you call them audits, but regular checks that, that happen each year around our quality management system.
Can we see the terms of that review, the terms of reference for the?
Which review?
For the Ziggy's Cross, sorry, I can never say that word. The internal review that's into the, into the tax leak?
Um, yes, you can, yes, you can.
Thank you, Mr Fang.
Thank you. Just in relation to, I guess, procedural matters, when the transfer occurs across and the new entity starts operating, I imagine that there will be circumstances where there's perhaps ongoing or current projects or even projects that are, I guess, being currently tended for, that may be awarded to P W C that will be required to transfer across with the entity. How will that occur where perhaps a a contract is currently being serviced by P W C? But given the very nature of that contract, it's then going to be transferred. How are you going to manage that, the clients being government? How are you going to ensure that, that the same quality of work that's available from a firm that's got the resources of ten thousand employees is still going to be delivered by a, a smaller entity that's been transferred across with fifteen hundred?
So there'll be a whole work stream set up around this particular area, and there will be numerous work streams. This is the normal practice when there is a divestment of, of a business. All of those matters will be worked through and the appropriate assurances will, will be given to government. And I'm sure that the, the team will work very collaboratively with the stakeholders in government to make sure that happens appropriately. This would be, you know, we've just announced the intention to do this transaction, it would be the normal process now, that there is a lot of detailed work that happens to make sure all of the operational aspects are covered, as you say.
With relations to timeframes and, I guess, actioning this announcement today, what do you envisage will be the, the timescale that's required? Are we talking months, years, weeks?
Yeah, so, so the, the intention as of today, and, and we'll obviously be informing and keeping our New South Wales Government contacts up to date as much as we, as much as we can. But the intention is to work through to a transaction outcome at the end of July and then have the business transferred by September. If, if we can do that sooner than that, we, we will, we've got a team working very hard. But you have our assurance that we will keep New South Wales Government through New South Wales Treasury up to date on how that is progressing.
And just in relation to, this is my final question before I pass to my colleague. And just in relation to, this is my final question before I pass to my colleague. In relation to the nine executives that, also partners, that are currently now on leave, I'll say, there's been some questioning about why they're not named at the moment when perhaps others have. I'm very cautious about witch hunts and, and understand the, the concern that you have around perhaps naming members. In the circumstance where you've already taken the opportunity to identify four of the people who are involved as the primary, I guess, partners that have been engaging in that conduct, is there question marks around how much other engagement these nine have had? Or what's the differentiation between the two parties? Are you just not sure and therefore you want to be doubly sure? Or is it that you actually just are seeking to further that investigation?
So this is a comprehensive, detailed investigation, as you can appreciate, and we need to get it right. When the investigation's complete, which will be shortly, we'll be naming all of those people who did anything wrong, and there will be appropriate accountability. But just to be really clear, when we've looked at this, we're not just looking at people who might have been deeply involved in the matter itself, we're also looking at leadership and governance accountability as well. Because it's very important that we take a holistic view of this and we make sure that accountability is taken by those who need to take it, both in terms of top of house as well as people who were directly involved in the matter.
Okay, and when you say really shortly, it'll be a number of weeks and it'll be before the divestiture of the, of the government business?
Yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to put one thing to you which was raised earlier for your comment. So the Chair put to the Chair of the South East Sydney Local Health District before, that it wasn't an exception in terms of PWC, that partners were on boards. And I think the Chair may have outlined that of the eight hundred or so, PWC partners, about six hundred and sixty were on boards, and I guess an inference in a sense that it was the business model to have partners on boards. Just interested in your comment with respect to that.
So the boards that would have been referred to are all not-for-profit boards, and we have a strict process around which boards partners can go on. But it's part of actually our culture to want to do community service. So most partners like to bring their expertise to boards. It's actually recognised in the New South Wales Government guidelines that expertise is needed on these boards. Now, the government, the six hundred and sixty are not government boards, they are not-for-profit boards. It could be the local cricket club, it could be, you know, something bigger in terms of the arts. So it's not-for-profit boards more generally, and we make sure that the appropriate processes are followed there.
Is there a policy in place at PWC that effectively allows or promotes board involvement? For instance, is there a time allocation that's provided or the like? Or some form of encouragement in your KPIs to be part of a board?
So partners work very hard, so there's no time allocation. It's expected if you take on a board role, you dedicate the appropriate time to it and you make sure that you do all of your firm responsibilities at the same time. Certainly, we believe that in terms of giving back to the community, it is an important thing to do for partners to devote their expertise. Those roles are unpaid roles, and certainly it's not a business model at all to try and generate work.
Thank you.
Chair, can I ask one very quick?
Sorry, I was just about to say, just on that, you know, I used to work in law firms and we went on secondments all the time. One of the things that we would do in those secondments or in those additional sort of roles that we held was to come back to the firm and share our general knowledge about, you know, there was, there was never an assumption that it was, it was simply for, you know, the sort of the goodness of your heart. It was also, like, sure, it's nice to do work in the community, but also you are gathering, when you sit on a board role, especially a government board role, you're clearly gathering information that's going to be useful for you in your career. Are you, are you seriously saying that these six hundred and sixty-six partners who are sitting on up to nine hundred boards across Australia are not benefiting in any way from that? That the firm is not benefiting from that knowledge that then resides in their heads about those organisations?
So remembering that, as I said, most of these organisations are not-for-profit entities that an individual is passionate about their, their delivering community service, because that's what they're passionate about, and it's not about generating work, it's not about a business model. This is about giving service, and we believe that that's aligned with the PWC purpose.
You're very lucky to have such benevolent people, yes, Mr. Bodig.
Very quickly, thank you, Chair, the excising of the government business from PWC, does that include state-owned corporations?
So like I said, we, we've announced an intention to, to undertake this divestment. We need to do work over the next, over the coming days and weeks to determine exactly what is in and out of those perimeters. And we will be keeping New South Wales Government up to speed as much as we possibly can and as much as they need us to.
Sorry, I just have one point of clarification, thank you, Chair. Ms. Dubbins, I just wanted to clarify, and it might have been misheard by me. When do you understand that Mr. Collins, going back to Mr. Collins, signed his first confidentiality agreement with Treasury?
Oh, I'm not actually sure when he first signed his confidentiality agreement, but PWC did not become aware of it until March twenty-one.
So PWC doesn't hold a repository of agreements that partners or others sign when they're engaged by a client?
Well, we, we do now, but we did not have, we did not have, we didn't have a record of Mr. Collins's agreement.
Okay, so have you retrospectively gone back to get that repository populated?
We are obviously, as, as I've said in our open letter, we have obviously tightened up our policies and procedures since, since all of this has come to light. That work was well underway before I, before I became the acting CEO.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, unfortunately that's all we have time for. You are incredibly busy people and we are grateful for the time that you have spent here with us today. Just before we wind up, I will remind media representatives that although they are able to take photo and video within this room, that they must not do so in the parliamentary precinct outside of this room. Thank you very much for your attendance. We will be back at one thirty, if I'm correct, let me check, yes, after lunch. We'll see you then, thank you.
Okay, we are back. Thank you very much for attending. I now welcome our next witnesses from the Sydney Local Health District. If I could ask each of you to please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation, please.
Mary Haynes, Deputy Chair of the Sydney Local Health District Board. I swear that the evidence now given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
John Charka, Chair of the Sydney Local Health District. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Dr Theresa Anderson, Chief Executive of Sydney Local Health District. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. And you were in all of the board minutes that I read over the weekend.
Yes, I was. I'm very old.
Are you, are you the most...
Experienced.
Yeah, are you the most experienced local health district CEO that we have, chief executive?
No, there's a small group of us who have continued to hang around.
Very good. Am I open questioning someone else?
Do they want an opening statement?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mr Fang. Do you have a short opening statement you want to make?
No, we're happy to proceed.
They can ask questions, yeah.
That's all right. Well, perhaps we can start then, if no one else is jumping in. We've heard a lot about the distinction between consulting and contractors. And I think we've pulled out how much consulting work you have paid for from the district since 2011. But do you have a number that also includes things that would be labelled contracting or outsourcing that's gone to consultant firms?
Oh, to consultant firms? No, I'll have to take that on notice. But I do, you know, we use between two and four million dollars a year on contractors. So that would include when we get someone in to do evaluation, when they come in and work within the district according to the ministry's definition. So that is different to obviously consultants. And that includes when we get in contractor, contractors to do plumbing etcetera. Although Sydney Local Health District employs amazing staff within our capital infrastructure and engineering team. From time to time when we're doing works, we'll need to get in some additional people. And that certainly also increased during COVID. When we were, as you know, with Sydney Local Health District, we ran the special health accommodation in the quarantine programme and the Sydney Olympic Park Vaccination Centre. So we did use contractors for some of the security cleaning etcetera where we weren't able to employ staff.
Thank you. One of the questions that I asked the previous witnesses, but they didn't have their chief executive in attendance unfortunately, was in relation to how much, I guess, sharing of work there is amongst the different local health districts. So, yeah, so if someone's, say, say a consultant has done a really good bit of work for one local health district, how do you get your hands on that in a more sort of cost-effective way? Does that happen?
So thank you. I'm happy to start that and hand over to the chief executive. So firstly, there is, there are times where the chairs of all of the local health districts do get together and meet. And during those meetings, on quite a number of occasions, the minister will attend. And also the secretary of the department will attend. Chief executives are also invited to attend from time to time. And of course, specific topics will be spoken about and some ideas will be shared. In my two years as chair, I'm not aware of a specific situation where another chair has come to me and provided me consultancy-type reports that I've been able to access. But there are occasions where, for example, our district will undertake certain work and share that information with other districts and vice versa. And the chief executive can comment in relation to those.
Thank you. So I think one of the things that is not understood is how much New South Wales health works together. And I think anyone looking at what happened during the COVID-19 pandemic became more evident about the collaboration that occurs across the system. But being someone who has been around for a very long time, I can say that there are really good systems and processes in place that enable that sharing. So all of the chief executives get together with the ministry, the secretary and the deputy secretaries each month, for about a day and a half. And we talk around a whole range of things that we're all doing and sharing ideas about what we're, what we've done and what we plan to do. And that does include sometimes what we've done within consultancies. But if I look at the work that we've done around the patient experience, you'll note that in 2017 we had an increase in the use of consultants and that was when we engaged KPMG to help us with the outpatient transformation programme. And that was really initially focused on Canterbury Hospital, which is a very special hospital with a very large cold community. At the time, we had 145 community languages. It's a very multicultural community. We wanted to make sure that we provided the very best experience for our patients and consumers. And we wanted to see what other industries were doing. We used the results of the BHI report in terms of how we manage outpatients and we felt we could do better and that maybe we should be learning from other industries, not just from within health. So we did engage KPMG. They did a really great piece of work with our team. And it was very much also about capacity building. So it wasn't just about them telling us what we were doing, it was working with our staff. And we also engaged nationally and internationally, including with Disney, to see how they improved the experience of consumers. I have to say, in terms of assessing the outcomes of that, and that was shared. I'm on the Ministry of Health Patient Experience Elevating the Patient, the Person Experience Steering Committee for the state. And we share those ideas about what we've done. And many of the ideas that we picked up to help in terms of outpatients, we also used in the development of both the special health accommodation and also the Sydney Olympic Park Vaccination Centre. So I think everyone knows, you know, 12,000 people, up to 12,000 people were vaccinated in a day. And given the number of people who went through that vaccination programme, the experience was rated as very high. And one of the things that we looked at was every aspect of the person's journey and how we could improve that journey. So I believe that we can take a direct link from what we did in that piece of work with KPMG to... And they did not consult on the vaccination programme. That was my staff because we had done a lot of capacity building. But I think the Sydney Olympic Park Vaccination Centre again is a really great example of collaboration across the system. We set that up within 20 working days. That was a shell of a building with literally a cement floor. And we were able to leverage off our expertise, but also all of our partner local health districts who provided staff. And I'm very, very grateful to also other government agencies, all of our colleagues within Department of Community and Services, Customer Service, who all came on board and assisted us because we had to significantly increase our staff in order to be able to do that.
Thank you. You're, having read through your minutes, they are also notable in that they, you have a very good performance ratings and, you know, the highest performance level under the health ministry's guidelines or criteria at the time. In every month, I think, from inception, as far as I can tell, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Which is very impressive. When the activity-based funding got introduced in 2000, between 2012 and 2014, when that model came in, what, what were the sort of additional pressures, particularly on the board members, to be able to understand the financial operations of the, of the, of the district?
So we did a lot of education. The ministry established at the time an activity-based activity task force. Sorry, it changed its names a few times, so I'll have to on notice about what the name was. But that task force spent a lot of time with local health districts. We had to develop implementation plans and report back to both the board and the ministry in relation to that. And as you saw from the board minutes, we have a very robust financial risk and performance committee where we go through in great detail, as well as the audit and risk management committee. So it was multi-pronged, not just the board, but those governance structures that, that helped in terms of understanding where we were going. It has been a learning experience, I think, for all of us because, as you know, the Commonwealth have changed from time to time, how our activity is counted. And so it's been an ongoing learning experience for all of us.
Thank you, and apologies for my choking.
Chair, if I could just add a bit to that as a current, obviously I wasn't there at the time. But from the perspective of new chair, new board members, the amount of work that's undertaken with the chair and the new board members from an education point of view, from an understanding point of view i- is enormous. But the other aspect of it is that the work that each board member undertakes is part of a different committee. So each board member sits on at least two committees, if not three. Each committee has at least two board members. I chair one of the committees and sit on another one. A lot of the board members will chair the other committees. And it's that sort of very micro, very forensic work that is undertaken at the committee level. Then it all comes back to the board collectively. And of course, you can appreciate then that, you know, work is, synergies are created, understandings are created. And each of the board members who sit on a committee are in a position to brief the other board members of what occurred. And the audit and risk and the finance committee is probably two of the best examples. But then you've also got all of the clinician-type boards etcetera where the clinicians are sitting there also being able to advise, with the chief executive overseeing it all.
Thank you. The minutes disclose in 2012, I think February and June, and also in October 2014, there were briefings given to the board at those board meetings from PWC in 2012 and KPMG in 2014, just as examples. When those firms came in to provide briefings, and I think both firms had come in to provide briefings on activity-based funding or parts of, you know, aspects to do with it. Was that, that sort of information given pro bono? Was it on the assumption that there would be something afterwards? What was the nature of that sort of engagement for those briefings?
My recollection is that that was actually part of the New South Wales Health Engagement. I'll need to, to go back and, and have a look at the minutes and the engagements. But I'm pretty sure that that was the case, but I'll need to take it on notice.
That would be really useful because there was, and the reason I kept reading your minutes was because there was a lot of very good information about what was coming from health generally to the various boards. But I haven't seen the same disclosures in other board minutes. So I find it interesting that there was, yeah, so it did look like it was part of a programme where they had been employed, commissioned by health to go and give you that information. Right, okay. If you'd have come back to me, that'd be good.
The cheer squad of the...
What was that, Mr Fang?
Since I've got to give you some pom poms, you're like the cheer squad of this, this health district.
Why not?
They're in contrast.
Yeah. In terms of conflict of interest procedures, I've asked the other two local health district board members as well. But in terms of how you record your potential conflicts of interest, are they all recorded in the minutes? Or is there a possibility where some things can be recorded on the register outside of the minutes?
I'm happy to start that. So each, including myself, we notify any, we firstly notify any other positions that we hold. That's recorded in the register. And if there's any conflicts of interest, we notify that. And if at a board meeting a matter arises, that, for example, if something arises at the board meeting that I hadn't noticed or another director, a board member hadn't noticed, then it will be disclosed at that meeting. So if no new disclosures are required or there are no changes... So if no new disclosures are required or there are no changes to the disclosure, then it's simply as per the register. I myself have updated the register on at least three or four occasions in my two years. So whenever a new appointment occurs or an old appointment ceases, I notify the register and I'm aware that the other board members do likewise.
So when you, so for example, so you started, Mr. Jacker, in July twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
At that point, did you put your disclosures into the conflict of interest? Sorry, register? Or did you wait till the first, right, okay.
No, no. So in a sense, when I first applied for a position on the board, of course, I had my CV attached. So the CV in itself had all of my appointments, et cetera, including my history, past employment. And then when I started, I filed the disclosure notice so that it was added to the register. And then I simply update it as something happens. Or at the very latest, if something comes up at a board meeting, I notify the board meeting.
And that conflict of interest register is not publicly available, is it? Or can it, can it be inspected or is there, you know?
I'll let the chief executive answer that. But my understanding is that the register is held with the chief executive.
That's correct. So the secretary for the board is the executive assistant to the chief executive who maintains the conflict of interest register. As the board chair said, there are recordings of those conflicts within the minutes. Having also reviewed them, not back to two thousand and eleven, so my apologies, I didn't do that on the weekend.
You have a life, apparently, just me.
So, you know, going through the register, I think that it would be fair to say not every instance has been recorded. I think our, we've attempted to do that. But when I go through, there are a few that are missing.
Do the other board members get to see? Or I guess presumably they can inspect that register, but do they inspect that register?
Yes, they do. We do insist they do that. And it's like the annual corporate attestation. We make sure we have all the documentation there. And I require the board to actually check it out, not just read the attestation. So they get all the documents and at least a couple of them go through those. And on, you know, around an annual basis, Narita will email out those conflicts of interest.
She's the EA for the chief executive.
Okay. So, Mr. Jacker, so when we look through the conflicts of interest disclosures in the minutes, it's disclosed as an example that you are the, or in September, September two thousand and twenty-one, that you were the director of New South Wales Wheelchair Rugby League. In December two thousand and twenty-two, it was disclosed that you had been appointed the CEO of Liverpool City Council. Were there other disclosures made prior to that that went into the register?
So I, I think at the time I first became chair, I probably sat on about six boards and four charities. They were all disclosed in my CV, they were all disclosed in what appears subsequently in the minutes are the changes that may have occurred. So for example, Liverpool City Council, December twenty-two, obviously that was never disclosed previously. It didn't exist. It was disclosed as soon as it occurred.
Were you a director of Cosmos Cosmetic Enterprises, Republic Limited?
At the time of?
In, when you first, so when you joined in July twenty twenty-one?
I don't believe so. I don't, I can't, I, I believe that occurred subsequently.
I have.
It is, of course, open for you to take that on notice if you.
Look, and I think that's the better way, so that I can be a hundred percent accurate. Let me take that on notice and come back to you.
If it's helpful, I've got the ASIC.
If you've got an exact form there, I will accept that as the date.
So I have an ASIC register that says that you were appointed on the first of June twenty twenty-one and that you ceased to be a director on the eighth of December twenty twenty-two. Does that sound right?
Absolutely.
So would that have been disclosed? Or do you know if that was disclosed in the register?
Yes, the Cosmos would have definitely been disclosed.
Was that as part of the CV that was? Was that disclosed on the CV? Or did that, when you, when you were first appointed? Or did that go as a separate, the thing about the timing?
I'd need to take that on notice because I can't recall when I put my application in to join the board. So if, for example, I put my application in May, then the answer would be no if I was appointed in June. If I put my application subsequent to that, then yes, it would have been.
Given the, the scandal, I think it's fair to say, around Cosmos Cosmetic Enterprises.
I don't agree with that, but that's your opinion, not mine.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, given the reporting in relation to Cosmos, the allegations of breaches of, of health standards in those cosmetic surgery clinics. There was a, you know, a living of the sixty Minutes episodes. And anyone who's not eating their dinner at the time is free to go and watch those. There was a lot of hate on that company at that time. Did you think it was appropriate to continue to be a director of that enterprise whilst still being the chair of Sydney Local Health District, which has got such a great reputation?
I, I didn't see any conflict of interest, if that's what you're asking me. I didn't see any issue in relation to it. My role in the, as a director was a role that propelled it to governance and a role that purported to legal. Obviously, I'm not a clinician. Obviously, I didn't undertake any surgeries. So I could see no conflict of interest in that regard, and it was fully disclosed.
Just take a point of order at this point, Chair. Just looking over the terms of reference for this inquiry, whilst I appreciate that there are avenues that you can look at around the engagement of consultants, et cetera. In relation to board appointments, it seems to be slightly outside the scope of the terms of reference. And I don't even think any other related matter would actually cover the questions that you're actually putting at the moment.
Thank you for the point of order. I think I was relying on the any other related matters, but I'm happy to drop the line of questioning.
I just, I mean, I, you know, obviously, there's, you know, issues around, I guess, the employment of consultants, but this is completely outside that scope.
Your, your point of order has very rarely, I would say, been upheld.
Can I commend you on upholding it against yourself? So that's, you know.
I think it's very generous of me. Does anyone else have any questions before I move on with some more general issues?
I, I have one general question, Chair. If it's okay, put it out. Dr. Anderson, we've heard evidence from New South Wales Health and other area health districts. And I just wondered, with regards to, for example, that big piece of work that KPMG did, can I ask what kind of post-project review or evaluation might have been undertaken and where that was directed? What the audience for that review would be?
Yeah. So it was really embodied in the work that we did with them. So the project led directly to the work that we've done around the digital front door and the development of our Florence program. I have to say, to be very frank, COVID did get in the way of us doing the sort of evaluation that I would normally do with that sort of project. Having said that, as part of that project, we employed, we put in place an information system to be able to get simplicity, to be able to get direct feedback that was current from our patients. And if you look at the Bureau of Health Information Report on, for example, the emergency department prior to two thousand and seventeen, when we did that piece of work and our results. Since we've done that piece of work, there is a significant improvement in most of the areas. Albeit, we've still got a lot of work to go because we still have those remnants, unfortunately, from COVID that have affected outpatients. We're still not getting through the same numbers of outpatients because we do have to have some distance between our patients in waiting rooms, et cetera. So there's no doubt, there's been an impact of COVID. But having said that, you know, I think at any objective level, we can see the, the proof in the pudding because, and it did impact on how we looked at the vaccination program and the special health accommodation, looking at every patient experience and making sure that we're not only looked at that health experience and the clinical care, but looking at all of those things that wrap around the experience that patients have. Albeit, we still have a lot of work to do.
Thank, thank you. And to give a bit of context, so the Auditor General's recent report into the use of consultants, one of the things that was called out was a lack of evaluation. So I wasn't suggesting you didn't. I am genuinely interested and I know health wasn't part of, wasn't part of it. Thank you so much for your contribution, Mr. Fang, very useful. So really just wondering, you, you mentioned just then that this example wasn't your usual review because of COVID. Could you detail what a usual review of a consultancy project would look like?
So it depends on what it was. So another example would be that we also engage KPMG around the economic evaluation of the implementation of the robotic surgery program. And one of the reasons we did that piece of work is that, and I'll probably be shot for this, but robotic surgery is often used as a way of marketing hospitals, particularly private hospitals. Most of the robotic surgery programs are in private hospitals, not in public hospitals. And the reason for that is a lack of evaluation, particularly economic evaluation, around whether or not it makes a difference from a financial perspective. We know it reduces length of stay there, but compared to usual treatment. And so the evaluation wasn't specifically about whether or not KPMG did a great job or not. It was about what that program has done. And that program has resulted in some publications which are helping to inform where robotic surgery goes in the future and where are the areas that we need to focus on in terms of robotic surgery and where we, we don't, we haven't got all of the answers yet. But, and again, that one was impacted by COVID. But we have published three papers in relation to that. And we think that's really important in contributing to the body of knowledge around the use of robotic surgery.
Um, we still got our bracket, haven't we?
There's no brackets on this one.
Oh, there's no brackets.
You've got a question, feel free.
Sink your boot in, buddy, you're going.
Um, Dr. Haynes, can I just explore something with you? There's a Mary Haynes Consulting here. Is that, is that your firm?
That's my company, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's, it's, it refers here to Mary Haynes Consulting, designs clear-focused strategies that can be implemented in the real world, working with our clients. So that, it looks like that's a consulting firm. And they give an example of the South Eastern Sydney Local Health District here of a sort of exemplar, happy customer. Is that, was that conflict declared?
Yes, so thank you for the question. When I joined the Sydney Local Health District Board, which was on the first of January twenty seventeen, I established my company at the end of twenty fifteen, end of twenty sixteen. And so the fact that I have a consulting company and provide these services in the areas of evaluation, research, strategy and implementation to health and other government agencies and indeed the university was known as part of my CV when I applied. And then it's always declared on a regular basis that I do that work. That particular contract with South Eastern Local Health District was signed in twenty sixteen. So it was signed before I joined Sydney Local Health District. But nevertheless, the same principle applies. It's always, I've always declared my consulting company to the district. And similarly, whenever I do work with government, I always declare that I'm on the board of Sydney Local Health District in both ways.
Okay. So, I mean, there's a little bit of a pattern that seems to be emerging in the evidence here whereby consultancy firms, be it PWC or KPMG or in, in this case, your particular firm, and then sitting on health boards. In one sense, it's understandable because there's subject matter expertise associated. Presumably, that was the previous government's justification. But can you see how?
So you don't have, your government doesn't have the same theory?
I'm asking a question, Chair. Is that a point of order?
No, no.
Okay, well.
Musing, it was amusing.
Mr. Fang.
Maybe be quiet unless you've got a point of order.
All right, order.
Take a point of order then.
Can you see that from a public's perception, there might be a bit of a dubious perception on the aesthetic? In other words, we've got the people who are potentially benefiting from government money sitting on health boards, dealing with public policy and health decisions, which then may in turn benefit the company again. Was that issue, I mean, obviously, you've declared the conflict, but was that issue ever discussed on the board?
I don't recall that being discussed explicitly. But I, I would like to add that I have never done any consulting work for any company that I've sat on their board of or any auditing, any audit and risk committee. So I, I can see your general point, but in relation to me personally, I have never conducted consulting for any company, any organization that I've sat on the board of. And, and there are other hats that I wear, actually, that I always declare. So I have other positions that, so I'm an adjunct professor at the University of Sydney and I'm a senior advisor at the Sacks Institute. So it's all part of the package that, that comes with, with my appointment. It's one of the hats that I wear.
Can I ask?
Chair, may I add just to that from the chair's perspective? So a- as the chairman, I'm well aware of the various roles the deputy chair has. They've always been disclosed. The other board members are well aware of it. The chief executive is well aware of it. There'd hardly be a board member that doesn't have other roles and other positions. And it's that different expertise that each board member brings, just as. So, you know, Dr. Haynes was only recently appointed as the deputy chair because of all of this extensive experience that she has and she brings to the board.
There's, there's two sides to this, though, isn't there? There's the, as in two, two different sort of aspects. So the aspect of when a person is sitting on a board, whether or not they are influencing the board's decisions in relation to the use of consultants. And then there's the other side of it, which is that the consultant, by sitting on a board within a government department or agency, is, has access to information that they wouldn't all otherwise have, not just in relation to the, the workings of that particular district. But as we've heard from, you know, briefings from government or letters from government around different things. Dr. Haynes, wouldn't you agree that that position as a board member is also helpful in terms of the work that you do, that you are getting money for?
Chair, I think, I mean, just reflecting on that. I would say it's part of my industry knowledge. It's very hard for me to disentangle what I know from sitting on the board or my university work or my Sacks work. So I can't, I can't say explicitly that there's been anything I've found out at Sydney Local Health District that's assisted with the, the more technical work that my company does. We, we specialize mainly in research and evaluation advice to government agencies, helping them with their research strategies, reviewing their research programs. Is, is the lion's share of the work that we do in my consulting hat. It, it's very hard to disentangle what I've picked up in my whole ecosystem of the world in which I work, you know.
What, what percentage of the consulting work that your company does is for New South Wales Health?
I, I'm afraid I didn't, I, I have to take that on notice. I didn't prepare because I thought I was here representing.
That's okay, no, well.
Sydney Local Health District Board and the matters concerning them, not my company.
You could almost say that's potentially outside the scope as well.
It's not at all outside the scope. It's a consulting firm sitting on a board. Sorry, I've almost finished there. Just, so in terms of, you were a senior manager at the health advisory practice at PricewaterhouseCoopers, were you not, Dr.?
Yes, I was, in. Yes, I was in from 2002 to 2005. And so I left PWC over 18 years ago.
Did you cross paths at the time with Dr. Folly?
No, I did not.
And final question for our handover. The, yeah, a quick, sorry, I was distracted before, but that, from the question about New South Wales Health contracts, from a quick search of your website, it does appear that there's a number of New South Wales Health contracts and a lot of work. So yeah, if you could come back on notice, that'd be great. Over to you, Ms. Primrose.
Hopefully a simple one to Mr. Ajaka and Dr. Haines. As board members, what do you see as your role in relation to the appointment of consultants?
So I take that as, if I can use the term that's used extensively in this play, they're operational matters. They're matters for the chief executive. I'm not aware, again in my two years, and I'm happy to be corrected, by the chief, I'm not aware of a matter coming before the board about appointing a consultant. It's not part of our duties as board members or our function as board members. It really is a matter for the chief executive. I'm well aware of all of the probity issues and the governance issues of appointing consultants or appointing any contracts in relation to the Sydney Local Health District. We of course have all of the audit and risk matters that are attended to. We of course have our surveyors come out and undertake the audits each and every year for each and every hospital. They're the things that I'll get invited to as the chair, but not as the, the board does not get invited to those. So that's how I see our role.
Would you agree with that, Doctor?
Yes, indeed. We do not provide advice about which consultants to procure and when to use them.
So would it be fair to characterise that as that you've got a totally hands-off role you would see in relation to the appointment of consultants?
I see it like any organisation. You have a board and then you have the chief executive and the executive who do the day-to-day operations, who do the operational managers, who do the management matters. If the board's going to start interfering in the day-to-day management, then it's never going to work. The matters that come to the board are board matters. The matters that come to a board each and every meeting are those per the agenda, per the business papers, per the various committees that have already met with their minutes, et cetera. They're the matters. Put in another way, the board deals with the micro aspects and the management deals with the, we deal with the macro and the management deals with the micro aspects. That's the way it should be.
So how would you respond to the suggestion then that the board really has no role in ensuring probity in relation to the appointment of consultants?
No, I don't agree with that. The exact opposite. I mean, if a matter was to come to the board's attention, obviously that would be dealt with. But again, the board sets up and has a big impact on the policies. It has a big impact on how matters are dealt with. The committees do likewise. The Audit and Risk Committee, which is chaired by one of the board members and has other board members on it, these are matters that the board attends to and deals with and ensures that all the right governance, probity issues are dealt with. The chief executive, and I speak almost daily, where she will bring certain matters to my attention. If she believes that it needs, the board should be involved or I believe the board should be involved, it'll be added to the agenda. Our board meetings will go from three to four hours each and every time that we meet.
Does that, so does that extend to, in terms of this conflict issue? Okay, someone declares a conflict, their company is gaining a significant proportion of financial benefit from Department of Health, the conflict's declared. Who is the responsible person to ascertain the level of accountability on that? Or is it just the conflict's declared, I've done what I had to do, nothing to see?
All right, so I mean, let's go back to the issue of consultants, which is what this is about. That doesn't go to the board. But if a board member has declared an interest, if, for example, I declared an interest that I'm a director or partner of X, Y and Z and that matter was being considered by the chief executive in relation, well, obviously I would absolutely withdraw, have any involvement in it if at some stage there was going to be involvement either by myself as chair or by the board.
So in the case of Dr. Haines, that declaration of conflict, where does that go to?
It's part of the register.
The register?
So that...
And who is the custodian of the register?
Chief executive is the custodian of it. She's well aware of it.
So the chief executive, if there were any alarm bells, the chief executive could...
Would escalate it. And I think one of the things to remember in New South Wales Health is, as our board chair said, the board is there for, to ensure that we've got the appropriate governance in place and the strategic direction of the district. It is the chief executives that have delegations for expenditure of monies. You'll note that our expenditure on consultants is relatively small. And however, you know, every dollar that we spend, I have to say, we take very seriously. And where possible, we always make sure we look to our own staff and work on our capacity. You know, there are those four areas about why we use consultants. But we have a robust governance structure in place. We have a finance, risk and performance committee meeting where we discuss the finances. We have our audit and risk management committee that has three independent audit committee members. And if, and we have a robust internal audit process. We have the New South Wales Audit Office also going through our annual financial statements and looking at every line item.
I understand the paper trail, but I'm just, I'm just curious to know where the buck stops. So does the board appoint the CEO?
The board and the secretary appoint the CEO.
So ultimately, the CEO is accountable to the board?
To the board and to the secretary under the act.
So in that situation where a conflict's declared, you would imagine that following that line of accountability, the board should have some responsibility for...
I would escalate it to the board chair and to the secretary.
Okay, so it only becomes an issue if the CEO decides to escalate it?
Yes, and I can tell you that as the chief executive of Sydney Local Health District, if I have any concerns, then I absolutely escalate them. We have a very good line of communication with the Ministry of Health and that includes to the chief financial officer for the state. I'm also on the State Procurement Reform Committee. We take it very seriously, these governance processes. So it is that we have, I think, very good oversight. I don't think there are very many organisations that have the New South Wales Audit Office spending quite so much time with them. And, you know, as a chief executive, I have to say that gives me an assurance because at the end of the day, when the proverbial hits the fan, I'm the one that everyone looks at.
Final question if, from me if I can, and that is in relation, given your long experience, Dr. Anderson, with health, has there ever been an instance when a matter involving a consultant being used by a, by a health board has required to be reviewed, let's say by the board at the direction or the request of the general manager?
No, because there haven't been any concerns in relation to the consultants that we've used. You know, as the chief executive, we have utilised the advice and recommendations. I have to say, I don't always take the recommendations of consultants. I think the KPMG one, I think I took 10 of the recommendations. I didn't take all 14 because I didn't think we needed to. That's a decision for the chief executive.
So not one?
Pardon?
Not one instance?
No, there hasn't been an instance of concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all we've got time for.
Well, I'm very happy with the answer.
Very good. Thank you so much for attending. To the extent that questions were taken on notice or there are supplementary questions, you'll have 21 days to put your responses in, but the secretary will be in touch. That concludes this panel and we've just got one final session. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Um, thank you and welcome to our final session for today's um set of um witnesses. Uh, so our final witness is Professor Mary Foley, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, if I could ask you to please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Uh, my name is Mary Foley, um, I'm retired and have a number of different roles, none of which I glorify with the description of position, if you see what I mean. Um, because I am an adjunct professor with Western Sydney University and casually teach there. And do other things as well, which I'm happy to fill you in on. Um, the oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Do you have a opening statement you want to give?
I would like to, Chair, and I thank the committee and yourself for the opportunity to be able to speak with the committee and to um address you on some of the themes that, you know, are emerging with this very important review. As I said, my name's Mary Foley, I'm retired, I currently do some academic teaching in health policy at Western Sydney University. I also have a board role in digital health and a number of pro bono roles in public and not-for-profit healthcare. Over the last more than, I hate to admit, forty-five years, my career choices have largely been driven by my passion for good public policy in health and social services. Um, I don't want to bore the committee, but I started in the federal public service in nineteen seventy-six, where I worked in health and social policy roles in Canberra. Then in the early eighties, I moved to work in New South Wales Health for the next almost eleven years, initially in policy and services planning and eventually at deputy secretary level and finally as head of the Office of Health Policy. In nineteen ninety-two, around the time of the birth of my second child, I accepted an offer to move to a private hospital and health services company to work on developing private healthcare within a public policy framework. In two thousand, I joined the not-for-profit health sector and in nineteen ninety-one was appointed CEO of St Vincent's and Martyr Health Sydney. There I had overall responsibility for public and private health services, uh, private hospitals, including St Vincent's Public Hospital. And I relished the opportunity to work with an organisation dedicated to the values of social justice and compassion and where public and private health services could work together to improve patient care and community health outcomes. This was also at a time of enormous and growing pressures on public hospital services and on the funding of healthcare generally. At national and state levels, major committees of inquiry were established and I was increasingly being asked to develop policy papers and participate in public fora on health reform. Around two thousand and eight, as my term as CEO was coming to a close, I was approached by P W C about joining them as National Health Practice Leader, an employee position as a subject matter expert. I saw this as an opportunity to contribute to national health reform. I joined P W C in late two thousand and eight and was there for about two and a half years. In twenty eleven, I was offered and I accepted the position of Director General of New South Wales Health for a five-year term of office. I've read the transcript of the committee's proceedings on fifteen June and I'm aware of the general tenor of the issues raised there, which I think has led to the invitation to invite me today. I fully agree that the use of consultants by governments is a legitimate area for scrutiny and review and I appreciate the important work of this committee. It's my view that where it is appropriate to use consultants, it must be carefully managed and accountable and that the expertise and skill within the public sector and especially in vital service delivery areas such as health must not be diminished. Some specific points arise from the committee transcript of fifteen June, about which I wish to comment very briefly, Chair, if I may. The first is at page thirty-six, the Chair made reference to the scandal surrounding P W C at the moment and of course it's all over the papers again today. I would just like to have, to make clear, absolutely clear, that that matter has nothing at all to do with me. Uh, secondly, at page forty-one and some conversation around forty-one, Dr Kane commented that the, sorry, Dr Kane commented that the crux of the issue is the devolved structure and it doesn't allow oversight and so on, and there was a conversation about that. I did just want to put a few clarifications to the committee before we proceed and that was, I clarify that the report that was referenced, that I prepared for the Minister on the governance of New South Wales Health was not the source of the recommendations for devolve governance to local health districts. The report is my exercise of my duties at the time as agency head to advise the government of the day on the implementation of their policies. The fifteen local health districts and other structures had already been set up by legislation of the previous government in twenty-ten and a process of major restructure was already well underway and taking place at the time of the change of government. Devolution to local health service boards was a condition of federal funding of public hospitals under the national health reforms. Um, the report that I was responsible for advises how to further progress the implementation already underway so as to implement the incoming New South Wales government policies and to take account of the context of the major national reforms that were continuing to be negotiated between the Commonwealth and the States. The report was published on the Health Ministry's website as one of many documents about these very significant changes in keeping with the New South Wales government commitment to transparency in these matters. Thirdly, and lastly, at page thirty-one, the Chair mentioned me as an example, and I am, of someone who has gone from a consulting firm to New South Wales Health. When the position was offered to me and I accepted, I immediately resigned from P W C. In commencing with the ministry, I was careful to declare possible conflicts and to be advised on how any potential conflicts should be managed in accord with government guidelines. I left the Ministry of Health in twenty sixteen, having opted to not seek reappointment when my term expired. I did not return to full-time consultancy of any kind and I took up academic teaching, which continues. And in twenty seventeen, I became CEO of a digital health company from which I retired earlier last year. And in conclusion, I wish to say that it was a great privilege to serve as Director General of New South Wales Health, especially in those amazing years of great bipartisan reform right across the health system of this country and to work with thousands of dedicated and talented people who sustain our state health service here in New South Wales. And it is they, and you've met some of them in the last session, it is they who have ensured a strong and caring health system uh, which has served the New South Wales community so well and of course especially over the challenges of the last few years. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to make that statement.
Thank you, and you have answered some of the questions I was going to ask, which is great. Um, can we just go back to, so you were the National Health Practice Leader for P W C Australia um, from two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven?
Mm-hmm.
Um, during that time, I do understand that the overall structuring of the health system and that devolution idea um, was part of a broader national project, but in terms of the way it was implemented in New South Wales, were you involved at P W C in providing advice to the New South Wales Government?
No.
No, no advice at all?
Not me, no.
No. Um, did you have any contact with the New South Wales, with New South Wales Health in a, um, you know, in the terms of, I guess, providing services from P W C during that time?
Me personally, no, not that I can recall. Obviously, uh, P W C is a very large and complex organisation internally, so there would have been parts of P W C providing services to New South Wales. Um, but my role as the, sort of the expert in health policy um, was one where I'm not running those services, those services all sit with partners, I was not a partner, all sit with different partners and different parts of the business. My role was, was to provide the overall guidance about how P W C should be thinking about healthcare, the kinds of expertise it needed to be encouraging in the firm, uh, identifying where the pockets of expertise were already across the firm and where they could be better coordinated and connected to support work for different, um, uh, clients. And, uh, and then my own role was one very much of thought leadership uh, and also in, given my background and expertise, a particular focus on feeding into the federal reform agendas in a number of ways, um, both in terms of producing thought leadership documents generally, which was part of, you know, P W C contributing to the debate and holding forums, uh, but also there would have been some national projects which I worked on.
So when you, so then you become, you get the job as the New South Wales Secretary for Health. Um, who was advising the government at that point on the implementation of that structure? I've seen a P W C report, I've seen a K P M G report.
I don't know who was advising the former government.
No, I'm, sorry, we're talking about the two thousand and eleven-
Government. Well, what happened was, and this is my recollection, it's quite a long time ago, but um, the new, the incoming New South Wales Government had a very clear policy in this space and it had been published long before the election. And it was in the context of the Garland Review and Mr Garland, now Justice Garland, had been commissioned by the then New South Wales Government um, back in eighty-nine or so, to uh, review the health system because as I said in my address, there was just this enormous pressure nationally on, um, on public hospitals.
Yeah, but in terms of, sorry, if we can just skip forward to two thousand and eleven.
Yes, I, let me, but this is absolutely crucial and, yes.
With respect, we're, yes, we're aware of the history though and how we got to that point.
But the issue is, the fundamental issue that Mr Garland identified as the problem at the heart of things was, was that in terms of how things were set up at that time in the structure of New South Wales Health, it had resulted in what he called, you know, this huge schism, that was as great as the schism of the eastern and western Christian churches back in the Middle Ages, and that was the terminology he used, between administration and the clinicians at the front line.
But what, sorry, I'm-
And so that led-
Very limited time, so can I just, just on that point though?
Yes.
What Garland was suggesting, that we needed more clinician and local input, is not what ended up happening with these, what we currently have with the local health districts, which is a very much responsibility being pushed down rather than taking the, you know, Garland's report was about actually harnessing um, the, the expertise of people who are closer to patients. Um, the two thousand and eleven restructuring, two thousand and twelve, was the opposite of that, so-
I, I'm not quite sure, and I'm here giving sword evidence, how one has a policy debate on that subject, but uh, I think there is one to be had and I'm, I'm happy, you know, formally or informally to provide some thoughts, so I'd like to have the opportunity to collect those thoughts, but, but, well, I'm not quite sure that, about your, I don't necessarily agree with your proposition as to how it was being set up at the time. Sorry?
I find I'm in the same boat with you and dis-
Perhaps, perhaps we can just move forward because our time is limited.
My awareness of where the policies came from for New South Wales was that the incoming government had written it themselves, drawing on Garland Review policy and so on, and it was about hearing this message about needing to be close to the clinicians and to community and for them having a real say at the local level. Certainly when I became Director General and met extensively to do that review right through the, through the system, uh, I met with medical staff councils and other groups who all put to me how enthusiastic they were for this model. It was also the same message coming through loud and clear through the national health reforms, which the Rad and then Gillard governments pursued.
We've gone well away from the original question.
No, I'm getting to your question because you said who advised? I don't know who advised the former government in terms of the practical implementation steps and who involved. I am aware of who advised, you know, how we did it when we set up the implementation and, um, and, uh, the, it was largely done internally with some supplementation uh, for, um, practical expertise that we might have had a gap with when we had so much reform across there. So in terms of when you say advise, that has a, that has a connotation of telling them how to do things.
Oh, that's not necessarily the connotation.
Well, that's the eye tag, whereas, whereas, if I may, Chair.
Just sorry, we have limited time, they've already taken up a very long time with the opening statement. I just want to ask you, um, there was money paid to consultants in relation to the structuring of the health system in two thousand and eleven and twelve by K P M G and P W C, we referred to it in the previous hearing, so you would have seen it in the minutes, um, do you recall those pieces of advice?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure which pieces of work are being referred to. Uh, what I'm aware of, in terms of what I needed to commission personally, you know, to undertake the duties I had to advise the government how to implement their programme, um, was, we, I put together an in-house group, we consulted extensively through the system. Uh, I wanted to have one external person on that with relevant experience. Um, fortunate, I felt very fortunate that he was available because he'd just come back to Australia and he had just joined K P M G. Uh, but I sought for him to be, could we have him as him from K P M G?
But he was a partner at K P M G during that time?
Absolutely, but paying K P M G for us to have his time with us on the working group to particularly provide his advice around Victoria. Sorry?
Sorry, you employed a partner from K P M G to be on the working group, is that not the same as using a consultant?
Look, it is, but, but, it is, but when you say who was advising, it implies that there's a, a, a sort of a, a whole open policy gap or issue gap and you're seeking someone to advise and fill that. The point I'm trying to make is, we wanted a member of our committee uh, and as we talked to, who had been involved in other jurisdictions, both in Hong Kong with a very, you know, a, a, a regionally organised system and also, most importantly, in Victoria where activity-based funding, which was going to be a key piece, had been used since the early nineties, and we wanted to have that on there to give us a commentary that as we in New South Wales, amongst all our people, put together how we thought this should work, um, that we could have that important-
Point of order, Chair, talking over the witnesses not helping hands side.
In relation to your point of order, it is within the, the members' rights to pull a witness back to the actual question. Can I just move you off of this that I can go to?
Please, please do, Chair.
Um, the, I just want to ask about the-
So that's, that was one, and then when, can I just, the other one that I recall and because it was one that directly supported me, was, you've got some, um, um, practical project management support to help them run the implement, keep track of in an intelligent way, the various pieces of the implementation and to track and model that so that we could keep track of all the moving pieces. And that was a straightforward role, which really was because everybody was so involved with so many different aspects of the reform, we just didn't have a spare person to do that, and they're the ones I remember. I'd have to see the documents and know what other ones were there that might have been used more broadly in the ministry for particular pieces of work. I hope that answers your question.
Sure. Can I please ask you, um, in relation to the issue of Ms Kristin Stubbs, who was on the South East and Sydney Local Health District Board, um, did anybody ever discuss with you the potential conflict of interest that she had? Um, in the June two thousand and fourteen board minutes, there's a reference to the board chair, who was Mr Still, and still is Mr Still, um, discussing, uh, the governance of Ms Stubbs' continuing attendance at board meetings um, with the Ministry of Health, was that ever brought to your attention?
Not that I recall, but it's a long time ago now, but I, I don't recall that particularly being brought to my attention.
Were you aware at the time that Ms Stubbs was sitting on that board?
Um, only in the broad sense that the process for appointing board members was, I thought, well-described in the transcript last Thursday from Mr Minns from the ministry in terms of the process of people nominate or are asked to nominate, vetting and so on, and then a long list presented to the minister and then appointed, so-
You had worked with Ms Stubbs previously.
I had, I had, and so, um, very conscious of, you know, sort of not, not, um, taking any role in terms of who was or wasn't on, on those boards, it was for the minister's selection.
I'll just ask the government if they've got any questions at this point.
Professor Foley, I just, um, at a very sort of basic level, you can see how a person, let's say for example, I'm an employee at New South Wales Health, I might be a doctor, I might be a nurse, I might have academic qualifications, I might have forty years' experience-
Definitely a union member.
-in the field, how I'd be maybe looking at this pattern that's been emerging over the couple of days' evidence we've had and thinking, it, there seems to be quite a little cosy arrangement here between, um, board appointments and big consulting firms, they seem to be able to get spots on the board quite freely. Um, some of the declarations of conflict are found wanting, to the extent that they are, there doesn't seem to be any recourse, can you see how the average person would look at this and go, well, surely there's people resident inside the hospital and the health system who are qualified to be on these boards without having that perceived conflict?
So, an oversight board should have their own employees, is that what you're saying?
Mister Fang.
I'm, I'm just curious to the-
Commentary and interjections are disorderly.
Sorry.
Um, well, I, I can't comment on how all of that has developed over the last seven years. My recollection was that in establishing the boards and getting this new approach going, remembering that New South Wales in its history since nineteen twenty-nine only did not have boards in relation to public hospital and other services for a period, I'm not sure how long, in the first decade of this century. Um, so, um, so going, going back to then saying, how do we do, you know, support boards and have all the right processes? My recollection was that the focus was on having the, the right broad mix of representation as required in the, in the legislation, getting good processes, getting good training, having to train executives how to relate to a board, having to train boards about what their roles were.
Professor, the question was very, very straightforward and clear. Can you see how there would be a, a view from people inside the health system, permanent employees who might have forty years' experience, as I said, academic qualifications, saying, well, I could be on that board and I have no conflict whatsoever?
Uh.
I'm just, it's just a very straightforward question.
Yes, if the question is, could I see someone saying that? Yes, I can.
Yeah, thanks.
Can I ask a question?
I'll go to, um, Dr Kane and then I'll come to Mister Fang.
Sure.
Uh, Professor Foley, um, as I understand it, uh, the reforms that you detailed and that came in about twenty, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve were about, um, enabling sort of a grassroots filtering of expertise. Uh, post that era, during your tenure in the Director General role, what was the composition of boards in terms of those from the shop floor, so to speak, and outsiders? Was there a rule of thumb? Was there a, could you explain a bit?
Uh, look, I, can I come back to you on, on that? Because I've been out of this loop for quite a long time, so I'll have to go back and, and refresh my memory and, and, because the legislation specifies certain skills and, and, and there's also, I can't, I can't recall the detail about, um, uh, how, um, employees are able to be on boards versus having people from outside and so on, so I just have to refresh my memory on that.
Okay, so there wasn't a general sense that in, in view of this move to localise, that wasn't necessarily reflected by a majority needing to be from that service or from that area?
No, it was much more about from that community and the focus on community and connecting to community.
Thank you. Mister Fang.
Uh, thank you. Uh, in your experience, uh, a board is typically charged with oversighting uh, an organisation and, uh, the employees, the CEO down, are in effect tasked with uh, the operational side of the business or entity, as it may be, depending on what the form is. Um, but it's the governance that's the purview of the board, is that typically how you would sort of see, um, say, a health district operating?
Yes, I, I think in addition, it's important to note, and I think it's been mentioned in a number of the, by a number of other witnesses previously, uh, the, the unique construction of the Health Services Act and, and how those works, they're not, the board's governance responsibilities are not set up in the same way that say, a corporate entity where the board is appointed by whatever means and then the board recruits the CEO and then it's the board who has the authority for the entity and then the board makes delegations to the CEO. That is not how this structure works, it works like many structures in government work where you do have a board and it has a lot of the roles of a board, you know, corporate structure, um, which I think some of the previous speakers were much better qualified to speak to as to how that works. Um, but, um, but the actual financial delegation rests with the CEO. The CEO has strong accountability back to the secretary and into that system of the health administration and so on. Um, and so that makes for a different approach.
So in relation to the, I guess, the point that Mr Baragig was trying to, um, progress in his questioning to you, uh, where perhaps you have employees who, um, would look to, uh, serve on a board that with, which they themselves are employed under the umbrella of, um, do you think there's perhaps then, um, a conflict that's as pertinent, if not more, um, say more conflicted than somebody from an outside organisation serving on a board and understanding the, um, the workings of it, that then may, through one way or another, um, be the entity which provides in a professional service?
Uh, this is always something that has to be managed on governance boards, so if governance boards, um, in the public sector, particularly, um, university boards spring to mind or the board of the A B C or ones just like, I'm familiar with as a layperson, um, uh, is that balance of external expertise and independence, the other issue is the independence, so you're bringing that scrutiny, um, and, and then having, um, uh, um, board members who've come from within the organisation is always a difficult one and has to be carefully managed. Um, any board I've been on of that nature always goes to the board of fire commissioners as the precedent that each member of the board is there for the good of the whole. Um, but it's, um, it does mean that those things have to be, have to be managed carefully because they're, the external ones have, have to look at their conflicts of interests and what other hats they wear and so on and the internal ones have to look that they're not just pushing a particular agenda but looking at the agenda for the good of the organisation and what it's charged to deliver to the community.
So in effect, it's all about the management of that conflict of interest?
It is.
Thank you.
Mister Primrose.
Um, I, if I can just quote from The Guardian of the fifteenth of June, um, the, um, in relation to New South Wales Health's view of when you should use consultants.
Yes.
And they said, um, use consultants when they need specialist expertise on matters that are outside the normal work of the organisation or when they provide additional resources to augment the internal team to work on issues that are critical and time-sensitive. to work on issues that are critical and time-sensitive, end of quote. You'd agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, whose decision is it that the organisation would have particular areas which are outside the ro- normal work role of staff within the organisation? Now, for, for example, if I'm a health service, someone would be making a decision to say that this particular type of activity is not one that, um, we should be putting resources into through our normal staff, but over here, we've got some consultants, we can use them and bring them in. Would that be a decision of the board? Would that be a decision?
That'd be normally a, a decision of the executive.
Yep.
They would need to be, have, be able to give an account of why they make those decisions, uh, to the board. Um, uh, in, depending on, you know, the na- the nature and so on of, of whether they're, size and scope and so on. Um, but yes, they're, they're, they're the organizer, that's what the leaders in the organisation, executive leaders, uh, are charged to do and to make those judgements within, um, uh, government policies and guidelines uh, and, and about the best use of the resources in the, that they have at their disposal. Uh, and, uh, and that's a matter, going to be a matter of judgement within guidelines that should be open to scrutiny.
So ultimately, the resources of the organisation and where they're allocated by the executive team will determine whether or not you need consultants or whether that's something that can be done by staff who are internal to the organisation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Can I ask you, there's, there seems to be a significant number of people within New South Wales Health, um, who have either come from PWC or have gone to PWC or, or other consultants. Um, during your time as Secretary, was there, did you ever think that this sort of increasing, I guess, what others might term as a revolving door um, between consultants and health was problematic? And were any procedures put in place to try and manage or reduce or, you know, limit the ability for information to be misused once people left health, for instance?
Well, there is always the provisions under the, the various, um, Act, Public Service Act and the employment arrangements and everything about, about that confidentiality, when confidentiality, when, when, um, people are in the organisation or, or about employees when they, when they leave in terms of the movements, you know, back and, back and forth. So yes, that's, that's, um, uh, always an area of concern and, and to be managed. In terms of when, when, um, um, I joined and during that time, it wasn't as apparent that we had a problem of, uh, lots of consultants everywhere. Um, and, um, and so there was a huge job to be done and, and it really was about how to allocate the resources, the resources in-house and then where to supplement that. So, um, so it wasn't, it wa- it wa- I'm, I don't think, certainly didn't find then that we were fretting about, um, what you just described. The thing we did focus on was that when we did have consultants, to, to what extent was it something that was always going to be an outsourced skill? Or was it something where we wanted it structured in such a way that our people could learn and so that we could have it in-house? And certainly my own preference in any of the organisations that I have managed as a, you know, CEO or senior executive, my preference is always to go in-house and to develop the in-house skills and, and, you know, supplement only when necessary.
Was there ever consideration given to the, the concept of a gardening leave? So, you know, so for, for instance, in, um, other industries like banking and law and, and other, um, industries where the flow of information sort of residing in someone's head can be sort of problematic, um, they don't just rely on a confidentiality agreement. They say you need to have three months, we'll give you paid leave for three months before you go to another job. Um, was that ever considered as something that should happen within government positions?
Well, look, this is really in the area of, and I don't know whether it's still structured this way, but in my time, the Public Service Commissioner and the whole approach to employment in, in government. Um, and certainly it was something that was, um, it, you know, it's talked about in the, in the public domain from time to time. I've seen talk about it, you know, over the years. But that's very much a policy question for sort of central agencies of New South Wales Government.
So it's not something that was agitated for during your time?
No, not, not that I recall, but it might have been being, but I, if you speak to, um, you know, the, the relevant central agencies, they may have been thinking about it a great deal. It wasn't top of mind in terms of us in health. We had a huge agenda to implement, uh, and that's where we focused.
Did you have, as part of those contract arrangements with consultants, um, did you have any sitting within health, like physically located within the department?
Uh. Not many that I recall. I, I, I know when we, um, set up the Project Management Office, when, once we were in implementation mode and had governments sign off on our proposals, how to implement the policies, um, that, that we had a, a consultant seconded to, um, run that. And, uh, so that person had to be, um, uh, physically present several days a week. And so there are assignments of that nature that happened. That's the one I remember. And of course, um, I think Mr. Minns and, uh, Mr. Tomato at the fifteenth hearings talked about the processes they have for managing that. And that's what I recall were, were how, same processes at the time.
When you contracted, um, if you can recall, when you contracted a consulting firm and there was to be somebody sort of seconded into the department, um, was the government given a discount of some sort for that?
Oh, look, I, I didn't handle the procurement personally. So again, the question for the, somebody in the procurement side.
Um, from your perspective, having worked in government and in consultants and now in, and also in private, um, you know, you know, a private, uh, company, um, what do you think the benefit is for, um, a consulting firm to have, uh, employees or partners sitting within government when they're undertaking work?
Again, it depends. Um, it depends on the nature of, of the work. Um, my preference on either side of that fence is, is to have good separation, but sometimes that's not the case. I can recall, for instance, doing work in Canberra and generally the approach was you'd be assigned, uh, if they wanted you there so they could come and go and talk to you about how the work was going and so on. Uh, and it'd be a, a sequestered part of the department and you would have access for those, um, you know, access lanyard for that particular piece. Um, you didn't have free range of, of, um, operation, um, within the organisation. If it's to supplement a team, of course, that person has to work in the team. But my preference is when you're getting in, um, advice that it, it's very much contained and focused to the piece that you want to problem, solve the problem you've got, um, rather than it having them generally there. My recollection is, it's certainly in the ministry and that we didn't, um, you know, my recollection at that time is all, all the people I worked with on a general, on a regular basis for these things and they were, uh, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent, um, people from within. I mean, I don't, please don't ask me to do the maths on that, but that's.
No, no, that's all right. We can get the, um, the figures elsewhere. Um, I'm just checking if anyone else has any questions before I continue. Um, so just, I guess, finally, on this issue of, when we look at how the health districts have performed over the last thirteen years now, um, and the continued reliance on consultants, even if we don't think about the, the consultants on the boards, but the, I guess, the amount of work that's still being outsourced or still being contracted to consulting firms. Um, do you believe that that is an intended consequence of those reforms?
Oh, absolutely not. It was never thought about. That, that was not, we must do this so that. It was never either indirectly or directly referenced.
What could we have done differently, I guess, to, I mean, we've heard a lot about how complicated the reforms were, how the, um, activity-based funding reforms were really difficult, um, that this, you know, even in, um, uh, Gillian Skinner's, um, the former minister's, uh, second read on the, the reform bill, there's, there's talk of how there's gonna, you know, there'll be a requirement for, um, external, um, financial advice. You know, that, that would sort of naturally be required, at least in the short term, um, in order for these reforms to be effective. Um, what could we have done different, I guess, to, to make that so that we wouldn't be so reliant on consultants?
That's, I don't know if it's appropriate to take it on notice because I could come back to you with a.
With an essay.
Considered article on it.
You're an academic now, you can do a thesis.
Um, but, um, so I'm, I'm just not quite sure to answer that because it's such a big question. I'm sure there was lots of learnings and presumably o- over the years since then and many of those have been implied or applied. And I'm sure how it works now is far more sophisticated than it was at, at the outset because, uh, we've all grown and, and matured. I think there's lots of lessons there and just going back to the things the Auditor General was saying in the hearing on the fifteenth. I, I really took to heart and agreed with that it's so important to learn. And I think also in government that just because, you know, the, the democratic process means you have churn in governments, churn in ministers, churn, churn in, in policy, uh, that we really build on and learn rather than, um, rather than repeat mistakes. So I'm sure there's lots of different ways that could be improved. I'm happy to speak in any other way that's useful to the committee on that subject, but you just asked me a very big question for the final question.
Maybe we need to commission some sort of thesis. Um, I think that would be useful. Does anyone have any?
Maybe we can get a consultant to do it.
Someone had to make that joke. Um, right, well, I think that's all we have time for then. Thank you so much for making the time to be with us and answering our questions. There's no need to take that last one on notice because, um, you should not be required to write a thesis. Um, the, uh, Secretary will be in touch in relation to questions taken on notice and any other supplementary questions. Um, uh, there will be twenty-one days to respond to that. Um, but with that, that concludes our hearing for today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.